Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December 5th Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing. I'm Michael Hughes, Vice Chair. Stephen Vauld, our Chair, will be joining us shortly as soon as he wraps up a phone call. We do not have pastor this morning for invocation, so we will get started with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
John, if you could introduce our agenda for today and our procedures for zoning hearing.
And thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process of procedure. Each case will be called in American order. When that case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to see if there's anyone here opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that anyone opposed to a case, please stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so you need to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person who wishes to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case in hand. From their discussion, they may ask one more speaker to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice. In this case, will not be heard. That's rezoning case Z-43, Suhail Kazani. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are five cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-40 of 2023, Atlanta Remediation Group LLC. This case was continued until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-40 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-52 of 2023, Ten Fifty Four Investment Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff to the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-52 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-59 of 2023, SS Developers LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-59 of 2023 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-61 of 2023, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-61 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-64 of 2023, Cedar Real Estate Group IV LLC. This case was continued by the staff to the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-64 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone. We find when phones ring during the presentations, it does interfere with the process. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Monday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Monday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Vice Chair and Board, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Please proceed.
Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for December 5th, 2023. First case on consent is rezoning case Z-47 of 2023, Bentley Residential Properties LLC and Summerire Properties LLP. Request rezoning from R-20 and R-15 to LI for landscaping and tree service in Land Lot 1137 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Gresham Road and the east side of Fairview Drive. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plans received by the zoning division on September 6th, 2023, with the district commissioner approving the final plan. Number two, variances identified in zoning comments. Number three, reduction of buffer from required 50 feet to 20 feet adjacent to residency zone property. Number four, applicant to install a 10-foot landscape buffer and/or fencing along the public roads to provide screening. Number five, letter from Mr. George E. Bentley dated November 29th, 2023. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-47?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-55 of 2023, Husilio Toledo Cruz requests a rezoning from NS to R-15 for a single-family residence in Land Lot 131 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Zelma Street, west of Pine Tree Lane. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, construction hours limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final architectural elevations. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-55?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-56 of 2023, Joseph Fidelis requests a rezoning from R-30 to R-20 for a single-family subdivision in Land Lot 1173 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Holloman Road and on the south side of Hyrum Lithia Springs Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division dated July 21st, 2023. Number two, minimum house size is 2,200 square feet for homes in the proposed development of heated and cooled living space and shall have a minimum two-car garage. Number three, homes in the proposed development shall contain exterior materials of brick, stone, stacked stone, cedar shake, board, and batten, traditional lap siding, hardy plank, or any combination thereof. Number four, construction hours limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. and Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. Number six, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number seven, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number nine, site plan review comments and recommendations. And number 10, planning division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-56?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-58, Christian Brothers Automotive Corporation. I request rezoning from GC to LI for heavy automotive repair in Land Lot 869 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Delk Road, west of Powers Ferry Road. Staff recommends deletion to CRC, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2023, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, letter from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 27th, 2023. Number three, variances stated in the zoning comments. Number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Number five, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number six, planning division comments and recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer division comments and recommendation. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number nine, all vehicles be parked in striped parking spaces. Number 10, any heavy automotive repair be done inside the building. Number 11, no outdoor storage of vehicle parts. And number 12, no outdoor display of merchandise. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-58?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-62 of 2023, Race Track Incorporated requests a rezoning from GC and NS to CRC for a convenience store fuel sales in Land Lot 948 and 949 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Cobb Parkway, on the east side of Acres Mill Road, at the southeast intersection of Cobb Parkway and Acres Mill Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received stamped October 5th, 2023, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan. Number two, variance as identified in the zoning division comments. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer comments and recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-62?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-63 of 2023, Martin Herta, excuse me, requests a rezoning from R-20 and GC to GC for a contractor, who's a specialized contractor treating landscaping and parking and storage in Land Lot 211 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Santan Road, north of Gan Road. Site plan received, and staff recommends approval subject to site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2023. Number two, variances identified in zoning comments. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, site plan review comments and recommendations. Number five, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number six, tree service and landscaping contractor only. Any other use to be approved as an other business item. Number seven, applicant indoor owner, install a 10-foot landscape buffer with 6-foot solid wooden privacy fence along the road frontage. And number eight, district commissioner approve the final building elevations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-63?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And where are we going to pull Z-65 off the consent agenda, Commissioner Danz?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to pull Z-65 off the consent agenda here in its regular order. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. First one is LUP 27 of 2023, Marlene Graham, requests a temporary land use permit renewal for a personal care home in Land Lot 561 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Piedmont Road, west of Shaw Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received on September 25th, 2023. Number two, fire department comments and recommendations. Number three, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? LUP 27. Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 28 of 2023, Karen Gooden, requests a temporary land use permit renewal for a hair salon in Land Lots 622 and 637 of the 19th District. The property is located at the terminus of Fox Croft Court, east of Valley Brook Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation to be from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, Thursday, and Friday only. Number two, all parking to be on a hardened surface. Number three, applicant to be the only employee, no independent contractors. And number four, staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 28.
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 31 of 2023, Thago Santos, requests a temporary land use permit renewal to allow outdoor photography in Land Lots 103 and 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Old 41 Highway, west of Kimberly Road. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, final site plan submitted on October 4th, 2023. Number two, maximum of two employees. Number three, one sign up to six square feet. Number four, clients by appointment only with a maximum of three clients per day. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 31.
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Vice Chair and Board, except for Z-65, which will put in its regular order.
Thank you, John.
Yes, Vice Chairman Hughes, I would actually like to make two additions. One addition to the consent agenda, and also one edit to an item that already is on the consent agenda. So for the addition to the consent agenda, that would be Z-49. I'd move that that be added to the consent agenda. One additional stipulation, I believe the applicant is already working on a submittal two.
Okay, so we want to add Z-49 to consent?
Z-49 to consent.
All right, let me go ahead and read it in.
Okay.
See if anyone opposed to it.
Okay. Do you need me to provide the one additional step as well at this time?
Is that for one that's already on consent?
No, this would be for Z-49 as well.
Okay, let's hold off on that till we actually read it in. All right. All right. Rezoning case Z-49 of 2023, DG East Cobb Guthrie's LLC, requests rezoning from PSC and NRC for a restaurant in Land Lot 69 of the 1st District. The property is located on the south side of Lower Ros Road, west of Johnson Ferry Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-49?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. So Commissioner Anderson, just go ahead and state your motion with your conditions.
I move to add Z-49 to the consent agenda with one additional stipulation that applicant prepare a submittal to traffic study.
And can we also state all staff comments, recommendations?
And all staff comments and recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion to add Z-49 of 2023 to the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Call a question. Any discussion? Call a question. We'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda as...
There's one other edit to that. It's a different additional step to Z-62.
All right.
And the additional step was to add a just landscaping plan subject to final approval from district commissioner.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add a stipulation to Z-62. Any discussion? Call a question? All right. Motion passes 4-0. Now we will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as revised.
So moved.
All right. Motion second. Any discussion? Call a question. Motion passes 4-0. Consent agenda is approved.
Okay, all those folks are on consent. You're free to go. Just come back in two weeks for the board commissioners' hearing. And moving into the held and continued agenda. First case we're going to hear for the continued held agenda is rezoning case Z-15 of 2023, SDP Acquisitions LLC, requests a rezoning from R-20, RA4, GC, O-N-I, NS, N-O-S to PVC and OS for mixed use, townhomes, multifamily, office, retail, wholesale, and distribution in Land Lots 364 and 365, 428 and 429 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Chastain Road, on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Rezoning case Z-15? Let the record show there's eight people here opposed. Rezoning case Z-15. All those who would like to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
We are ready for you. Go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you, and good morning. I'm Kevin Moore here, on behalf of SDP Acquisitions in this rezoning application that we've heard now a number of times. So I'm going to be reporting back to you on the items that we were requested to provide and do and update you as far as those plans and exhibits go, which have all been submitted. First, I do want to remind you, this property is just over 57 acres. You see it on the screen. It's zoned to a number of different categories, R-20, RA4, O-N-I, NS, GC, as well as a significant portion zoned to the office services category. You can see it there, stretching along Chastain Meadows Parkway. This property bounded to the left per your screen by 575, on the right by Chastain Meadows, on the north or top of your screen, Chastain Road. Turning now, I want to go through the updates for you based on the request that we've heard. Let me run through those with you so that you can see what we have been doing. First, just to remind you, this is the site plan that provides for office services, zoning for most of the southern portion of this property, which is about 30 acres, and then PVC for the northern portion of this property, which is about 27 acres, that fronts along Chastain Road for a PVC. What we want to try to get across to you from this standpoint is due to a lot of questions about how this property would be developed and what would be usable green space versus other types of green space and so forth. What we've done first is highlight for you in the pink. Those areas comprises over six acres, 6.28 acres, what's been denoted as usable open space. What that translates to is usable landscaped or active or passive usable areas for the PVC, and specifically for the residents of the PVC that comprises a section that has walking trails, sections that include the retail or restaurant plaza area that is usable space outside of parking and buildings, active amenity for, active amenity areas for the townhome portion of the PVC. It also includes landscaped, usable landscaped, walkable areas within the townhome areas, as well as other landscaped areas, including courtyard and garden areas and active amenity areas for the senior portion of the development here. And we've denoted that to demonstrate for you exactly the amount of acres that's dedicated to active and passive usable green space and/or amenity space for the PVC residents. In addition, what we have in green throughout the development is what we've denoted as simply as green space. That can comprise either undisturbed green space. It can also be comprised of areas that would be landscaped as well, including the 100-foot buffer. If you recall, there's a 100-foot buffer with Birmingham that stretches along the entire middle portion of this property here. That's double the size of the proposed buffer, recommended buffer by staff, which was 50 feet. That comprises just at 20 acres of the entire site, or 35% of the entire site would be landscaped and/or undisturbed types of areas throughout. Again, 6.26 acres in the PVC alone that is usable active or passive green space, which again, just in terms of the PVC, comprises over 30% of the PVC portion of this site. Now, I want to also answer a question specifically as relates to those areas in between the townhome that we consider to be usable areas of landscape and amenity for the townhome residents. And what we've prepared and submitted as well is a detailed landscaping plan for those courtyard areas. They comprised of dense landscaping, as well as hardscapes, walkways, benches, and so forth. This is a detailed landscape plan to show how those areas between the townhomes that we've designated. It's not every area between the townhomes, but areas that we've designated that connect throughout the townhome area to provide usable areas for residents to take their dog for a walk, for residents to sit down on a park bench and enjoy that space with their friends and family or themselves to read a book. Very nice place to sit and enjoy and walk as well. And that's taken throughout the townhome portion of the development, as you would expect for those residents. One of the other aspects that was being asked was tree save areas. We were asked to identify tree save areas. So what this applicant did is take it upon itself to perform a complete tree survey of these different areas. Want to identify two areas on our site. Number one is this area here, where we'll also be including a walking trail. That is an area that will have complete tree save. We've also identified an area here in this portion of the site that will likewise have a tree save area. Those trees total somewhere over 900 trees that would be saved just between those two areas on this site plan. Those are designated tree save areas. Doesn't mean everything else is cut. It just means those are the designated tree save areas. Also, if you've been down Chastain Meadows Parkway, there are existing trees that have been planted along that parkway, and we have those along our frontage. Those trees likewise will be saved along our frontage. There are existing trees that were planted after the installation of Chastain Meadows, except for our entrance location. We also wanted to highlight this area, which is outside of our property. And I do note that it's outside of our property, but along the Interstate 575 exit ramp, which is located here, this area is heavily, heavily treed outside of our property, counting over approximately about 1,740 trees that are located densely, existing trees outside the property, but along our property boundary that provide for excellent buffer as well, both from 575 and for this proposed project. In addition, we have also proposed a 15-foot landscape buffer along that boundary to help with additional screening along 575 with additional landscaping from us from that standpoint. along five seventy-five with additional landscaping from us, uh, from that, from that standpoint. Also, one of the questions that has continually, continually, uh, arisen as it relates to this project is specifically about the O S, and I really want to focus in on that, uh, today again. Uh, as I stated earlier, a portion of this property, a good portion of this property is already zoned office services along Chastain Meadows. We are proposing, uh, for thirty acres of office services, and the question has been asked, well, is that consistent with what we're, with what, with what we are proposing? Is that consistent with the area? The objective fact conclusion is it's absolutely consistent with the area. What we've done is taken a survey of Chastain Road South coming down, uh, Chastain Meadows, located twelve buildings, all zoned O S. From Chastain Road down Chastain Meadows, all of this area is zoned office services. For these twelve buildings, we went and made sure we, uh, took measurements and counted dock doors, which was an important aspect and question that had arisen previously. And we did a survey of that to count the dock doors, as well as the square footage of these buildings. Uh, what we've, uh, arrived at is to determine what is an average building size. The buildings range in size from as small as forty thousand square feet to as large as a hundred and sixty-seven thousand square feet. Uh, the average is ninety-three thousand square feet. The average, uh, square foot per dock door for each of these buildings all have those same dock doors that we are proposing. The average square feet is three thousand six hundred and forty-six square feet per dock door. For our proposal, we average thirty-three dock doors, and we, uh, have from a square footage per dock door basis for our proposal is three, just over thirty-seven hundred square feet. The purpose of this is to demonstrate to you unequivocally that what we are proposing is absolutely consistent with the office service developments that have occurred on Chastain Meadows. No question about it. We are completely within, uh, the ranges that are provided here. Ranges of dock doors for, per building go from seven on the low end to forty-one on the upper end. At this point, we've also agreed that we would limit the number of dock doors for us. Which was a question that had been asked previously. We've agreed to limit our dock doors on the two larger buildings to no more than thirty-five dock doors, and on the smaller building, which is along Chastain Meadows, to no more than twenty-eight dock doors. Again, entirely consistent with the nature, type, and extent of office service buildings that are along Chastain Meadows, not only adjacent to us to the south, but across the street, across Chastain Meadows, reaching all the way to Chastain Road, and then beyond south of Big Shanty as well. Those are all office service zone properties with buildings, with dock doors, and as we've demonstrated, what we are proposing is entirely consistent in terms of size, length, and the number of dock doors for such types of buildings. And I want to reiterate that, because I think part of this equation here is to consider the constitutional principle of equal protection, whether this property and this owner and this op applicant is being treated the same or similar as it relates to other properties, and not just other properties, similar or same properties in the exact same location along Chastain Meadows, stretching all the way to Chastain Road. And there can be no question but that this property should respectfully be rezoned to, uh, office services, but with us voluntarily limiting our proposal as opposed to what these other office service zones received. We have answered every question. We have addressed every item that's been requested, and we respectfully request your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from the, uh, opposition.
Good morning, planning commissioners. My name is Tulun Abard, and I'm with the Bells Ferry Civic Association. I'm here representing area subdivisions and residents. The BFCA remains opposed to this rezoning request due to the size and intensity of the speculative warehouses, intensity and zero lotlines in the PVC, deforestation of the entire site causes increased noise, air, and visual pollution, and an inadequate burn between the PVC and O S areas. At the last two PC meetings, specific action items were called by for you, including providing detailed site rendering showing the view from the retail area, townhouses, and apartment complex towards the warehouses, incorporating all the A R C, D R I recommendations, and a landscape plan with comprehensive tree saving measures throughout the development. These have been ignored. In the past year, the BFCA has met several times with the applicant, SDP. From the start of the negotiations, the BFCA was informed that this development could only be built if it included several office service buildings to make the entire development economically viable. The BFCA agreed as long as the proposed O S buildings were similar to the other O S facilities along Chastain Meadows in function, size, and hours, and would not be used industrial warehouses and last mile delivery facilities. In addition, the BFCA stressed the land cannot be clear cut and a substantial number of existing trees needed to remain around the property. The applicant agreed on the function of the O S buildings and a hundred-foot buffer of existing trees along I five seventy-five, as well as in other areas around the development. The applicant has since reneged on our agreement. The applicant submitted a tree saving plan last Friday, but it is inadequate and does not save trees throughout the development. On the site plan, the tree area A, near the I five seventy-five ramp, is not on the property, as their attorney mentioned. It is on the DOT right-of-way, and it will not be an adequate natural buffer to keep air and noise pollution away from this development and area neighborhoods. In regard to tree area B, the applicant is already required to keep the trees in the undisturbed stream buffer, and in tree area C, along Chastain Meadows, it may have to become a water quality pond, which will require the removal of all trees. According to this site plan, nine hundred trees are being saved on three acres, which means approximately sixteen thousand trees on the rest of the fifty-four acres will be cut down. That's not an acceptable nor fair swap. According to the county's co, code of ordinance, as known as the Muni Code, section fifty dash two one nine, quote, "The B O C finds and declares that rapid growth and development has resulted in the loss of innumerable trees in certain areas, resulting in severe air quality degradation. Well-managed urban forest resources increase in value and provide benefits to all the citizens of the community with respect to air quality, water quality, stormwater management, temperature control, community aesthetics, and general quality of life. These benefits are crucial to the long-term health, benefit, welfare, and safety of the citizens of the community. In addition, healthy community forest increase local commercial and residential property values," end quote. Please abide by the code and protect the trees. Regarding the open space site plan that was submitted last Friday, if one looks closely at the usable open space and green space on the site plan, these areas overlap and are shown as purple. Right-of-ways and parking lot islands are being included in the green space calculations. The village green has been turned into a walking plaza. What definition is being used for green space, and how does it differ from previous base, which is not being divulged? It needs to be noted that, that in the county Muni Code under PVC, section one thirty-four dash two one seven, it states the following PVC limitations. One, the development shall be compatible with the topography of the land and shall preserve any unusual topographic or natural features. As noted by stormwater management, quote, "The proposed site is ninety percent wooded and has rolling topography with relatively mined slopes." Number two, the development should not adversely affect developed or underdeveloped neighboring properties," end quote. There are several established neighborhoods across the street from the proposed development, and they have a right not to be adversely affected by the noise, air, and visual pollution due to the clear cutting of the property. This proposed development is delineated within a CAC, not a RAC, in the future land use map. A community activity center, quote, "Provides for areas that can meet the immediate needs of several neighborhoods or communities. Typical land uses for these areas include, include low to mid-rise office buildings and stores," end quote. It is meant to serve the local community and thus minimize traffic congestion. Comparable zoning districts in the CAC do not include industrial and warehouses. Cherokee County has stricter codes in place and higher costs for distribution warehouses, which is why this property and its location close to major highways in other counties is attractive to these type of businesses. We don't want nor deserve to be a delivery center for Cherokee County. The applicant asserts that these buildings would be office service related, like those nearby, and not distribution warehouses or last mile delivery facilities. What measures will the county take to ensure that this will be the case? The existing O S buildings have a max twenty-four clear height and a limited number of loading docks. We request that a certain limit be placed on the height and number of loading docks to prevent them from being used as last mile delivery, distribution facilities, and warehouses. Two years ago, an Amazon distribution center was given the permission to be built on the corner of Chastain Meadows and Big Shanty, adjacent to Z fifteen, without any public input. Due to the economic downturn, Amazon pulled out. After FedEx was slated to build a massive distribution center instead, fortunately, they too pulled out. However, Scannell is now clearing the land to build two massive, five hundred thousand square feet speculative warehouses with a multitude of truck loading docks. These buildings are supposed to be office service only, but clearly are not, and Scannell admits they are industrial warehouses, which is shown on the slide. These are only allowed in an industrial area, not here. The warehouses would generate over two thousand commercial vehicle traffic a day, allowing industrial warehouses in a non-industrial area and in a CAC was a blatant violation of county code, and county residents want to know how the county will correct this injustice. Meanwhile, what is the county going to do to ensure that this will not happen again with the Z fifteen buildings? The two Scannell warehouses will be larger than this applicant's three warehouses, which will generate over two thousand vehicle trips a day, mostly commercial. Combined, there will be almost a million square feet of speculative ware, warehouse space, resulting in over four thousand commercial vehicles a day traveling air roads. While there is some commercial development to the south, this area is surrounded by residential developments to the north and east, K S U's main campus to the west, including thousands of student off-campus apartments and Fifth Third Stadium, which has a multitude of college events throughout the year. Certainly not needed are more high-intense commercial entities to compete with area residents and students who travel the corridor daily by car, as well as by foot and bike for work and to access transit trails. The addition of these commercial buildings will add thousands of heavy vehicle truck traffic daily into the mix, creating a dangerous traffic flow situation to the median area, including the arterial roads of Big Shanty, Chastain Meadows, and Chastain Road. There are already over sixty dump trucks traversing these roads daily. It would be impossible for roads to accommodate all the additional heavy truck, truck traffic and cause safety issues. In the proposed Unified Development Code, U D C draft, which will soon update the current fifty-year-old antiquated zoning regulations, O S has been taken completely out of commercial and office category and renamed O S I for office service industrial, and will no longer be allowed in a CAC. This is a reflection of the true and current nature of O S. The U D C no longer mentions distribution facilities, distribution centers, office services, or warehouses, since they can and have been used interchangeably. The county acknowledges that the current O S category is outdated, and thus, O S is already inappropriate for this rezoning case, since this area is not industrial nor in a RAC. The BFCA respectfully requests that you recommend denial of C fifteen. Clearly, the O S buildings will be warehouses which do not belong in a non-industrial area and in a CAC. Additionally, house, additional housing options will be a much better fit and conform to county code. Currently, this zoning proposal does not meet the Steinbeck Act minimum requirements, as warehouses and clear cutting the property will adversely affect existing use of adjacent and nearby properties. The commercial buildings will cause an excessive and burdensome use of existing streets with a daily addition of thousands of commercial vehicles, and this case certainly does not conform to the long-range land use plan. We present a compelling argument as to legally why this case should be denied. The residents of Cobb County expect and demand that the county protect their health, welfare, safety, and quality of life. Please uphold the county code. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Any other opposition? Okay, this is in District two. Three, I'm sorry, District three, and Commissioner Dance will lead our discussion.
Um, if, if I could ask the, um, county attorney for an opinion, um, that might help guide this discussion. I've asked it earlier, and he's had time to look at it. The que, the question is, um, and it, it strikes me that, I'm sorry, this is the time we're bringing it up, but is a, um, is the, the O S use authorized per code in, um, in a CAC?
Per the code, I don't think, I don't think it's consistent with the code. I'd have to go look and read exactly what that says.
Okay. Okay, but a strict reading of it would indicate that it's not consistent. Is that right?
I believe so, but let me, let me look at that real quick.
Okay. If you, if you take a second to do that, I'd appreciate it, because I think we probably have all of our other presentations that have been made and remade, and thanks to all of you who have participated in that process on staff.
I believe the strict reading of the code, looking at one thirty-four, two, two, three, says that, uh, O S uses are allowed on properties delineated within a RAC category.
Okay, and as, as I read it, it said within the RAC, within I C A, an industrial area, and?
Correct. There, there's I C A category and industrial category defined and shown on the Cobb Comprehensive Plan nineteen ninety.
Okay, so technically, it's not, the CAC is not included?
The code does not expressly say so.
Thank you. And the code does expressly say, though, uh, it does allow a, a limited special exception uses, um, for a neighborhood activity center. Correct.
That is correct, neighborhood activity center.
Okay. Okay, I want to ask if any of my fellow board members have questions that they would like to ask of, anyone, staff, or anyone else? Because I'm, I'm gonna, I'm going to defer to y'all.
Yeah, I, I would have a couple of questions of the applicant. Hey, Kevin.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. Um, so, um, just kind of in, in two parts, one on the, kind of, on the PVC portion. Are there any, um, and forgive me if this is already included, are there any accommodations being made for sustainability certifications as part of your, uh, stipulation letter specifically? Or do the houses be certified, or that's by EarthCraft or Lead or some designation like that?
It's not a part of our stipulation letter. I'm, the reason I'm turning, I'm looking over to Ashton Woods, which is our residential development partner and builder here. Um, so it's what Ashton would be building, Ashton Woods would be building, which is one of our finest and best builders here in metropolitan Atlanta, specifically Cobb, so. So, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Are you pursuing any, um, and good morning, by the way.
Good morning. I, and just for the record, Joe Ingram, Ashton Woods, thirty-eight twenty, Mansell Road, Alpharetta, three zero zero, two two.
Great, thank you, Joe. Uh, I was just asking, are you, are looking to, um, include any sustainability features as part of this development, specifically certifications like EarthCraft, um, which is a green home building certification?
So, we incorporate sustainable, uh, features into all of our homes, but there is no longer an outside certification that we do. Um, we build to and above code. We just don't have a third-party entity who certifies that, uh, the construction of our homes, if you will.
Okay.
But do blower door tests, um, low emissivity windows, uh, external, or the external components of the home are a hundred percent hardy material, um, plenty of other features, too. Um, and I can, uh, I can get with Kevin, and, uh, we can, we can list that out, uh, if, if, if you guys would like to see that.
Yep, um, yeah, and I appreciate, uh, providing that, uh, insight on there. Um, yeah, I, I think, certainly, given the environmental impacts of this site, um, and some kind of sustainability designation, or something that maps onto that, uh, would probably be appreciated, appreciated from my perspective. And then, um, just as a general comment, any, um, ability to accommodate in the housing, um, just hookups for E Vs within the actual garage.
Sure.
Those are.
Certification.
And then, that was the only question I had right now, but I wanted to see if any of my commissioners had any other questions of folks from, I have another question for Kevin, but I can reserve that for.
I want to have another question for this gentleman. I, I don't know if he can answer it, or be, I just had a general note from our, our, um, meeting from last month. We talked about reducing the residential density. I wasn't sure if that applied to the townhome piece or the senior piece.
I wasn't sure if that applied to the townhome piece or the senior piece. Perhaps y'all can refresh my memory, and then, what is the current density, I guess?
We had reduced it down. The senior piece had been reduced down to a maximum of 200 homes, 200 units. The townhomes had been reduced down to a maximum of 140. So we haven't reduced them since that last meeting. This is, you know, those numbers are both maximums, but they're where this project needs to be from a viability standpoint.
Okay. And then, one other question I have, just a clarification and also a note that I took last month. Has the applicant agreed to all of the Greta and DOT recommendations? Is that...
That's correct.
That is correct.
All recommendations contained within the Greta and DRI review that was in report have been agreed to by the applicant as part of this proposal, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So referring to the regional review finding dated July 27, 2023, am I looking at the right document?
Sounds right, yes.
Preferred document.
Yes.
Under noise buffering, it specifically says the property currently consists of 57 wooded acres, which serves as a natural buffer to keep much of the noise pollution and highly polluted air from Interstate I-575 from reaching area subdivisions. A large buffer of the existing trees needs to remain and/or a sound barrier of at least 30 feet, it doesn't say this, but I presume they mean high, needs to be constructed. Sound barriers were added several years ago along the rest of the stretch of Interstate because traffic noise already exceeded NAC impact threshold levels 66 decibels in 2017. The property should definitely not be clear-cut. The changing climate is an existential threat. We need to address these issues at the local level and planning and development standards. Additionally, there are other places in here saying there needs to be more green space. You indicated, I believe, in your presentation, you're suggesting a 15-foot green space along the residential area, but what my concern is, is that are we really meeting what has been suggested by the DRI review here when we don't leave any trees along 575 in the plan?
And I believe we are. I believe when you identify the number of trees that are off the property along 575, number one, there's 1,740 trees in that area that are remaining. Then, once you move to our property, we are, have identified those as landscape buffer areas, which are therefore planted with trees. We've identified tree save areas as well as 20 acres of green space area where you'll have either, it'll either A/B landscaped with additional trees that are being planted, and we would create an 100-foot wide buffer across the entire property with a berm that'll be completely treated. So those aspects of this, I believe, do, and more, do meet the spirit and intent of that comment from the DRI.
I like your 100-foot buffer, but my understanding, that's the separation running east and west, separating the residential to the north from the office to the south, right?
That's correct.
But you're not proposing leaving even as much as a 10-foot strip of trees on your property undisturbed along 575?
No, we're proposing that to be landscaped and added. It's a 15-foot landscape buffer along 575 for the whole of the property, not just the residential, but the OS portion as well, where we'd have additional tree plantings to supplement that. That's right.
What portion of that landscape buffer would be left undisturbed in trees? Because I mean, these trees right now are like 40, 50 feet tall.
A lot of them are pine trees, yeah, sure. So most of that would be comprised of a combination of that, but most of it's going to be replanted along that particular edge. Again, we have 1,740 good trees standing right there, and what are we buffering against at that point? We do acknowledge we can provide some additional screening along that side, so we are.
See, it's just, this is a recurrent theme that comes up and stuff that comes into this area, and that land's very valuable in that area, and there's a push for density. But my theory is that when you leave up an adequate tree buffer, you're actually adding to the value of every unit you produce, because you're cutting down on noise.
We believe there is an adequate tree buffer, and that's why we have folks like Joe Ingram with Ashton Woods, who believes it's an adequate tree buffer, and they're willing to put in billions of dollars to develop and build this site. Same with our senior partner, who's willing to put in millions of dollars to develop and have folks live in this site, because they believe that there's an adequate buffer that's being proposed by this project. I look at the other properties in this particular area and don't recognize and know for a fact not a single one of them has ever been held to any development standard that said they had to designate tree save areas. They simply abided by the county code. We're designating and going beyond what the county code requires in each and every instance here. So we believe we've done that, and obviously, we can differ if that's your opinion, but we believe we've addressed that and more than addressed that issue.
Okay. As proposed, though, the majority of your proposed residential area would be clear-cut during the development phase, correct?
A lot of it would be, yes.
Thank you.
Same as the OS that you see on your screen across the street, same as the O&amp;I at the corner of Chastain Meadows and Chastain. That's an office building, that's a medical office building by Piedmont. I don't see an existing tree remaining there. Yes, that's the pattern and mode of development that has been enforced by the county in this location, time and time and time again. To take this owner, this applicant, and this 57 acres and to treat it differently is absolutely wrong, without question.
You're suggesting disparate treatment, but generally speaking, even today, we've required another applicant to leave a 20-foot tree buffer. We haven't given a variance down to zero today.
We're not requesting a variance.
It was on the consent agenda today.
We haven't requested a variance for a tree buffer or an undisturbed area. We haven't requested a variance.
Thank you.
If I could just, on average, Kevin, what's the width of the Georgia DOT trees that are there, that are on their property? 20 feet?
75, yeah. Per the engineers, at least 75 feet of trees.
On average?
Yes, for that entire width.
For that entire length?
That's correct.
So that added with your 15-foot buffer, we're talking about 90 feet?
Absolutely. That would be fully treated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, we did, yes.
Additional questions?
Yes, could you bring up your, I'm switching to the OS portion.
Sure.
Mind bringing up the chart you put up?
Sure.
So I guess, and I, you know, at the working session, we'd actually discussed a similar analysis we had done, and in terms of looking at the inventory, can I ask, what's the source?
What's the source?
Of these numbers? I don't know what the columns are, so also, so just help me understand what I'm...
The source of the numbers is due to the research from the applicant itself, who counted dock doors and measured buildings, and also, in terms of like square footage of the building, that would have come from either personal knowledge, but also from tax assessor information about the size of the building.
Okay, so this, so the source was, it wasn't a third-party source, it was really a combination of tax records and the applicant kind of walking each property?
Walking each property and counting dock doors, exactly.
Okay. For building number five, I don't know, what is, which one is that on this list?
There.
Right there? Yes, so am I reading that correctly to say that there's 27 dock doors for that building?
For that building, that's correct.
Okay. And I think that's 175 Chastain.
I don't know the address for it, but it's located here off of Big Shanty, Chastain's up here, but it's building five.
Right. And I go on like a site like CoStar, and they have 12.
Sure. And they may have used CoStar.
And I look at the aerial on it, and I see nowhere near 27. So I'm just trying to understand, because I just, just to be cut to the chase on it, these are about pretty wildly inconsistent with, and I know sources like CoStar have their errors and everything, but I'm just trying to get my head around what I see as a pretty large discrepancy in terms of this data versus what's kind of an agreed-upon third-party source. And I think if you look at the aerial on that, you probably would see that... So, yeah, I guess, yeah, tell me how you got around to these numbers, because they're just different immediately.
This is JR Wright with SDP.
Sure, my name's JR Wright. I'm a principal of Strategic Development Partners, SDP Acquisitions, 3715 Northside Parkway, Atlanta, Georgia. I personally went out and walked every one of these buildings and counted dock doors in dock positions, and this would include positions that had been previously glassed in. They were designed for dock doors, they could be removed, the dock, the glass cutouts could be removed, and they could be reused as dock doors. If you notice that building, it's got 125 to 135-foot truckport, which was designed for truck traffic for loading. Just Phillips, I believe, is the tenant in there, and they retrothrew the building, but future and past users have utilized those doors as dock doors. Also, there are drive-in doors as well, and which are also used for loading. CoStar differentiates dock-high doors from drive-in doors, so you add those together, and that also contributes to that count.
Okay. And I think that's an important distinction, because when I think of any kind of flex, so if you go on Google Street View and you walk the site, there's a big Lincoln Properties Company sign that says "Office Space for Lease," because there's an office park right there. And this is on Google Street View, so, and those are not for this, but the properties that are right on Chastain Meadows Parkway. And so, I guess where I'm trying to kind of come down is that even if they're punchouts for actual future doors, the kind of the counts, we can't really count those, they don't exist right today, right? There's a capability, but I think, as I kind of, just again, to be factual about it, and this is largely a park where most of the dock doors and the ratios are probably, there's more, there are much fewer dock doors than are shown on this data that exist today. So I guess I'm having trouble putting much stock in this, just because we're counting theoretical doors for a building that has like 12 existing plus a couple of drive-ins and recounting punchouts. And I guess that is important, I guess, I understand that, but again, just keeping with what exists today, that's kind of like the index that I'm indexing off of. So all that is to say that this is probably, by my numbers, the average for this area is about one for every maybe 5,000 square feet, which is versus the one for every 3,700 square feet that's right here. So that's kind of where my head is at in terms of what is kind of consistent with the surrounding area.
Understood, and I think we're, and I understand that from where you're stating, but I also think that the data is trying to also reflect how they're built, what they're built for. They're not built for, the buildings like Mr. Wright just explained, it's built to have those as dock doors. These are, like that building, this is developed a number of years ago, it can be easily converted to a dock door, that's how it's designed and built. So I guess it's kind of, do you count it or do you not count it?
Right.
Kind of thing. If it can be converted to that with no zoning stipulation that prevents it from being converted to that, it may have been that to begin with, probably was, and it was converted later to a non-dock door, just to have it available. So I guess it depends on how you want to look at that. If it can be used for that, that, do you want to count it or not? You know, if you're talking in terms of, you know, one dock door per 5,000 square feet as an appropriate ratio, I'm not going to argue on an opinion. If you think that's a better reflective opinion than that, I understand where you're coming from, I'll put it that way.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that there's always nuance with, I mean...
Sure.
And very familiar with this type of product.
Yeah.
Past experience, so I get that. I also just want to make sure that we're not overstating what is existing.
Sure.
Not what's capable of existing.
Sure.
If I could just piggyback on what you're saying, Commissioner Anderson, too, just for some added context, and I don't know for you, wherever you are with this area, but I mean, a lot of these buildings were built probably in what, the 2000s teens or a lot has changed since then.
Yep.
So I think we need to keep that in mind as well. The markets have changed significantly, so...
Yeah, no, I get that, and most of the general change in these markets, I think, have been towards providing for more dock doors for more fulfillment. I also want to be respectful of what already is there, and then spirit and some of the comments we heard about uses being inconsistent with being in a CAC. So that's where, really where my head is, trying to balance those considerations. There's a market consideration, which is different from what we as a body consider.
Sure.
What's leasable isn't necessarily what's reasonable.
And I, only to respond to, just say, you know, our point is that we want to be, and we have always strived to be consistent with what is there in the area, in terms of what those buildings are and how they function and how they're built.
Yep.
You know, each of those buildings that are numbered, all 12 of them, all of those OS-zoned properties are in, that's a community activity center. They're in, they were built, developed in a community activity center, those along Chastain Road and Chastain Meadows. So you tell me what's consistent.
Yeah.
That's where we are, in the community activity center, asking for the same thing. So, but that's our point, so I don't necessarily disagree with you, Commissioner Anderson, okay? The idea is consistency.
Yeah, and I get that. And one, several buildings I'd say just important to note are not in this survey, which are, they have zero dock doors, all those that are left that don't have numbers on them, because they're office buildings. So, you know, if we just, again, just trying to make sure we're having a comprehensive view of what's included, because we, some of the buildings here are purely flex and warehouse, and some of the buildings that are actual office aren't really being included here, which obviously, there are zero dock doors on those.
Of course.
So I just want to provide some context to my fellow commissioners, because I think that's where my head is at for how to assess where, what's considered consistent with the area.
Okay. Any other...
Those are my only...
Thank you for your questions. Any other questions or comments or questions for Kevin?
One comment, not for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
My only comment would just be this. When I was a young person in this town, I think I-75 had two lanes going in each direction from the Cumberland Mall area towards downtown, and it sure has a lot more than that now. I don't think it's reasonable for us to assume going forward that the DOT will never widen a road and that the DOT will never add a dedicated turn lane, and I don't think it's appropriate for developers to come in here and make that assumption.
Thank you. Commissioner Dance, back to you.
I would like to, if everybody's completed asking questions, okay. I would like to offer comments, probably in no particular order, but I'll try to make it somewhat organized. This is, and then make a motion. This site is unique, as are the circumstances of this zoning application, containing two uses that are actually diverse, and, but I think that what is incumbent upon everyone here, and I don't think anyone has lost sight of this, is that it is an opportunity for both developer and for the citizenry to come together and to have a conversation about what's best for this county and making one of the last remaining large pieces of land in the county pursuant to the official studies that have been presented to us, and to make the development of that land right, to develop it in a defining manner with a conscious regard for infrastructure, safety and environmental concerns, consistent with the health, safety, quality of life and welfare of the county. And I think everyone here is probably of the same mind. How we get there may differ, however. I see the 25-plus or minus acre planned village community tract that's proposed along Chastain Road, adding the senior apartments, residential townhomes and complementary commercial uses and green space to be consistent with the adjacent or neighboring properties, and I think that the adjacent and neighboring properties see that as well. So with respect to the proposal for the PVC tract, it appears that it resulted from constructive discussions over time involving the applicant and residents of that area. There seems to be little difference, that at least in concept, this is a good thing. I think that when we look at this, the zoning proposal... I think that when we look at this, the zoning proposal, we recognize that it will have a significant impact on existing streets and transportation facilities and add 4,500 trips. And I appreciate DOT's diligence in working with the applicant and parsing all the reports and bringing us information and solutions for infrastructure and intersections. The warranted signal improvements at Chastain Road and the agreement by the applicant to provide for the same are noteworthy, as are the improvements on Chastain Meadows and even the internal improvements as to the road access to what is currently the lower part or the OS part of the application. So I just want to appreciate the fact that a lot of work has gone into this and, and the individuals who've played a role in doing that, as well as, as our other staff members that have contributed to this review. I, I am, however troubled on the OS tract, I am, I do have a concern, a very basic concern based upon the question I asked of the county attorney as to whether or not the designation of OS is appropriate at all under Code Section 134-223, which is the Office Service District Code Section. So laying that aside for the moment, though, I would also, I conclude, though, that the proposed OS tract in its current iteration is not necessarily a proposal that I can support as it currently stands. And some of that relates to the issues that have been raised on the dais and questions have been raised by citizens, but also just as to whether or not it is consistent. And I respect the developer's counsel's perspective that we need to be consistent. But I would suggest that the question is not whether, the question of consistency is not related to whether or not the OS use is consistent with all these other warehouses in the area, but whether it is consistent with this actual application, which I've called unique, in that it has different tenants or individuals that will occupy each of the, I'll say halves, and what I mean by that is the PVC and the OS portions, that the individuals that are, will be involved in each half have different interests. And so the question is whether or not those interests are consistent and can be blended. So I think that's an issue that's outstanding, and it's, it is a single assemblage, but of multiple properties with very, two very different proposals. So I think, given those dual uses, that it's logical for us to consider the appropriateness of OS in light of the proposal for PVC. I would just want to review some things that probably have already been reviewed today and certainly have been reviewed over the last couple of months. The, the review of the DRI from the ARC did note that the project site is one of the last remaining large wooded parcels in the area and provides critical heat island mitigation, urban cooling functions, reduction of noise and air pollution from I-575. And it referenced that only four of the sites, 57 acres, were to be retained as open space, and that was unclear how much of it would remain wooded. So we've spent some time over the last few months asking about what would remain wooded and what tree save measures could exist. And the county has spoken to this in the past and indicated that the importance of environmental factors to the county and to its citizens is, is a critical matter and is on the same plane as the development of, of any infrastructure. So the ARC had said that retention of additional wooded area, including a substantial buffer along I-575, would support regional, regional environmental policies, as well as Cobb County's own internal policies for conserving land of environmental value. So we all know that the site is 90% wooded, which is reflected in the aerial map, which shows a dense forestation there. And we have, in our meetings, consistently requested information on tree save measures. And I think for the first time today, or, and I know I got it a few days in advance, though, we have this, this Exhibit Z4F that indicates that with respect to the project itself, there are only 900 trees that will be saved for this project and, and therefore, based upon our discussion today, clear cutting does seem to be intended, that those 900 trees are some along Chastain Meadows and the majority apparently in a narrow swath of land that extends from the currently designated large PVC tract in a dogleg fashion down into the proposed OS tract along a water corridor. And that has been referenced as being a potential trail for residents of the PVC tract. So that is a very, very small portion of this whole acreage that has been designated as being worthy of protection. So in prior meetings, we encouraged the developer to meet with the county arborist and others to propose solutions for green space and these tree preservation matters, consistent with the findings of the ARC and the resident concerns. And we also requested a detailed landscape plan for development. But those responses have trickled in, I would say, and I don't, I'm not certain that any meeting ever occurred with the county arborists for recommendations prior to, prior to this point. I know that there is a perspective that these are matters that would be addressed in plan review, but the request was specifically to meet with the arborist and other individuals. And I think that there was some effort to have meetings, but there's not a product that seems to have resulted from those meetings in, that would be consistent with what these recommendations are. Given the scope of the project and the internal relationships between the proposed PVC and OS tracks, I would have hoped to see a full-fledged landscape plan complete with robust tree preservation measures. And that's just, that's just not what we have. The Cobb County Code requires that, quote, "All reasonable options need to be considered to preserve a maximum amount of existing forest cover." And so that's in the code, it's noticed, and I don't think that it's reasonable to say that that's not required of other individuals, because it is in the code. And in this, in this regard, the code also recites the benefits of a forest canopy relative to the health, welfare, safety, and other benefits of citizens, stating that a healthy community forest increases local, commercial, and residential property values. So these are findings that the Board of Commissioners have already made and codified on behalf of the county. I also had requested renderings or projections of the views from the area in which the PVC zoning is requested toward, or in the direction of the designated OS tract. And this is because, once again, this is a unique property where you have residents and then you have individuals operating warehouse, warehouses in the area. And so it seems reasonable that you want to protect the view shed for your residents and, and have the best community that can be envisioned. So unfortunately, I don't think, I don't think those ever were provided, at least to my satisfaction. And so at this point, I just, I have to conclude myself that I don't believe enough work has been done or commitments made on the current application, and we're on a recommendation of outright approval of the applicant's request. And so, given the totality of the circumstances and a lot of internal wrangling and a lot of discussions with staff and the developer and council, I, I'm prepared to make a motion that itself is probably unique and something that our board is not normally accustomed So my motion is to propose to the Board of Commissioners alternative recommendations for their consideration. As a first alternative, I recommend that the entire assemblage be rezoned to PVC, with the requirement that a new specific site plan be presented to the Board of Commissioners for consideration, subject to staff analysis of any new recommendations and requirements. That landscape buffers of 40 feet shall be required on Chastain Road, the western side of the property adjacent of I-575, and the southern boundary of the property. As to the property, the applicant shall show that all reasonable options have been considered to preserve a maximum amount of existing forest cover and green space, and shall submit a landscape plan showing tree removal, mitigation, and plantings that shall be finally approved by the district commissioner prior to any disturbances. The applicant shall also provide usable and functional open space permanently protected by easement or covenant as required by code. Such approval shall be subject to all staff comments and recommendations, not in conflict with these recommendations. Finally, for clarity, the applicant shall restate other applicable stipulations not in conflict with these recommendations, even though previously articulated. So that is the, the first alternative recommendation, and the second would be this. In the alternative, I recommend that if the board is inclined, and that would be the Board of Commissioners, is inclined to approve a proposal involving PVC and OS tracks, then such approval should be subject to the following requirements and stipulations, in addition to any others approved by the Board of Commissioners. First, a corrected site plan should be submitted by the applicant with staff verifying all details of the site plan and ensuring that the site plan and stipulations recited by the applicant are correct. And this, the reason for that is just because I have noted a number of inconsistencies, and I think it's really, really important to make sure that we are passing exactly what we believe we're passing. Second, as to the PV tract, townhomes should be a max of 135, with a final specific site plan containing the exact number of townhomes, subject to the approval of the district commissioner. As to the entire property, minimum 40-foot undisturbed buffers shall be required on Chastain Road on the property boundary to the west alongside I-575 and along the southern property boundary. Such buffers shall be required to be well-went landscape with a specific landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner following receipt of the recommendations of the county arborist. Four, as to the PVC tract, no variances shall be permitted. Five, as to both tracks, the applicant shall be required to show that all reasonable options have been considered to preserve a maximum amount of existing forest cover and green space, and shall submit a landscape plan showing tree removal, mitigation, and plantings that shall be finally approved by the district commissioner prior to any disturbances. Six, as to the OS tract of the project, if permitted, and by that I mean if it's permitted pursuant to code, no more than one loading dock per 7,500 square feet shall be allowed, and further considerations should be given as to the square footage of the structures. Seven, all staff comments and recommendations not inconsistent with these stipulations should apply to both the PVC and OS portions of the project. Eight, all inconsistencies in the applicant's site plans and stipulations, if any, should be corrected and reconciled prior to final presentation. Applicants corrected stipulations should be subject to consideration by the Board of Commissioners. And the next one is, should the zoning request be approved, approval shall be subject to all comments and recommendations of staff, not in conflict with these stipulations. And so that is my motion and the alternative.
We have a motion and an alternative? We have a second?
Second for purposes of discussion.
Okay.
And can I just inquire, if I support either one of these proposals, what assurances are there within either one, that there will be a tree save along I-575 and the I-575 ramp on the applicant's property, not on the DOT property?
So that is provided for in both, both alternative recommendations. And actually, my intent is to offer both of these recommendations to the Board of Commissioners in their entirety and let them decide their course, because they are the ultimate decision-makers, obviously. But I had on the, on the recommendation, just to rezone everything to PVC, landscape, minimum landscape buffers of 40 feet shall be required on Chastain Road, the western side of the property adjacent to I-575, and the southern boundary of the property. If that needs to be clarified, we can clarify it.
That'd be helpful. I would just like at least some portion of the existing tree cover saved there. That's, that's a major concern I have.
So how would you like to?
I would require them to have at least 20 feet of undisturbed tree buffer all along I-575 and the I-575 ramp.
With, with at least 20 feet of-
20 feet of undisturbed tree buffer.
Tree buffer on what?
Along the whole western bound-
Along the whole western boundary, which is all of I-575 and the I-575 ramp.
Okay. And to insert that same language in the second alternative.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
May I just, just to clarify, the 40-foot minimum buffer, Commissioner Dance, was, that was not applicable to the western boundary of the site?
I thought it was.
No, it is.
So this is 20 plus 40? Is that?
20 within the 40.
20, oh, 20 within the 40 is undisturbed.
That leaves 20 for design.
Got it.
But 20 of undisturbed.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. We're having a discussion before we go any further. I want the-
Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify with the, with the motion presented, it's a motion for approval with a deletion to PVC or in the alternative for consideration by the Board of Commissioners as presented with the stipulations as expressed by the planning commission member.
Correct.
Yes. I think that's what the motion would say.
I agree.
May I make another inquiry? Based upon Commissioner Dance's inquiry to you a little while back, it's my understanding that the second part is, is doing something, making a recommendation that you consider contrary to law?
I believe your question is, under the motion presented, the alternative recommendation, your question is, is it contrary to law? It would seem to be in contrast or with the language of Section 134, I believe it was 223, in that OSC is only allowed in a rack or in light uses or with special accessions in the, in the NAC and the Future Land Use Plan.
Thank you. So I-
But the Future Land, I would just say the Future Land Use Plan is a guiding document. But the Future Land, I would just say the Future Land Use Plan is a guiding document. It's not a binding document, but it's a guiding document as to help assist make decisions. But as to the zoning district, it did express that OSC was not allowed in Iraq, other than, anything other than a rack, where it's not allowed in a CAC.
So my concern is just that if we go forward with both halves of that proposal rather than just the first half, are we being asked to lend a yes vote to something that I currently understand to be contrary to the council's advice? Looking for guidance there.
So, I mean, and perhaps I didn't say it as clearly, but I think that it needs to be, if the OS tracked, is it all viable, given the statute? And the BOC were inclined to honor that. But I, my reading, and if you want to read the code, have you seen?
You were the county attorney once, I'll take your word for it.
It's just very clear that it's not included, and like I said, I hate that today's the day that we're having this discussion, but that's what happens when you stay up a long time reading things. But the intent was that the second alternative be contingent upon whether or not OS is an appropriate designation.
Any further comment? Are all minds clear? Are we ready to move forward? Any additional discussion?
With the, so am I understand your motion to be amended now by the addition of that 20-foot undisturbed landscape buffer within a 40-foot landscape buffer all along 575 and the 575 ramp?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Would you also like to amend it to reflect the uncertainty as to the OS?
We could just say, subject to county attorneys' further review and recommendation of consistency of the zoning category with the application, it'd be subject to some reconsideration in that regard without which they shouldn't approve it, I would think.
I would agree to amend it, so amend it.
Thank you, second.
Okay. We have a motion. Commissioner Anderson.
One other clarification for the second recommendation, Commissioner Danz. Was there a step around the number of buildings within the OS? I think right now it's contemplated to be three buildings. I know there was some language you had inserted there around the ratios.
One dock per 7,500.
Right, the one dock per 7,500, and a question as to whether or not the square footage, further review on the square footage of the buildings themselves. We could just say of the three buildings. I mean, go ahead.
Yeah.
This is mostly your territory anyway, so you are welcome to speak to it.
It's a gift and a curse. The, yeah, I don't want to over-engineer the language around it. I would be curious to think about where the, I mean, the 7,500 comes in, and I just want to make sure where there might be a basis for that.
Well, I think it was pulled out of some of the discussions had, but if you have a better number.
Yeah.
We're flexible on that.
Okay, yeah. I would personally prefer, just again, if this option were approved, and there's obviously a lot of other issues that we can, I would probably want something where it was maybe a, based on the, like a survey of the surrounding property, what their ratios are inclusive of the office. I worry, though, that that's a little bit over-engineering, and that's the last thing I actually want to do on on. But I think the number is probably, just, I think probably a reasonable, more reasonable bogey, just given some of the surrounding area, might be closer to 6,000. But I think that if there's a, but I'm okay with the 7,500 if there's an opportunity for at least additional data to be provided as an other business item, or even to the BOC, that would indicate a different number, is it more appropriate?
Well, how about if we said no more than one loading dock per 6,000 to 7,500 square feet, with the proviso that a study could be conducted?
Yeah, I would just say, I think a reasonable number would probably be 6,000. I mean, they are looking at, that's basically half the number of docks.
Okay.
Where they are, that they are looking at, and any adjustments would be, would be, I guess, those would be another business item if they were to come up for any kind of-
Or the board could just consider it at that time.
Okay, yep.
So we want to recommend the 6,000 square feet?
That would be my recommendation. I'll stop there for now.
Okay, we could amend that to change from the 7,500 to 6,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, an alternative recommendation, and then revisions to those.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
I think there's going to be a request, and this is for the minutes, to add clarity to ask the District Planning Commissioner to restate the motion so that our clerks can adequately capture, and we will help navigate through that to make sure we are getting it clear. I think it would be helpful to say, I would advise to say, to state the motion to approval with a deletion to PVC for the entire tract.
Say it again.
Recommend approval, and the first recommend, part of that recommendation is a deletion of the entire tract to PVC with the stated conditions and stipulations. And then the second part would be, or in the alternative as a recommendation for approval of the application, subject to the host of stipulations and conditions as discussed during this motion, during the discussion for the motions, so that the clerk can adequately capture those for the minutes.
Okay, so are you saying that what you just said captures that, or you want me to reiterate what you just said? And all the narrative? I mean, I think you can pick the narrative up, but I don't want to lose something because I have not written it all down either. But we could, I'll take a shot, how about that? Okay, so the motion, and anyone can say, raise their hand if there's a problem. The motion is first to offer alternative recommendations to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration. First, to recommend approval with deletion of the entire tract to PVC with the requirement that a new specific site plan be presented to the Board of Commissioners for consideration, subject to staff analysis of the new recommendations and requirements. Minimum landscape buffers of 40 feet shall be required on Chastain Road, the western side of the property adjacent to I-575 and the southern boundary of the property. With respect to the western side of the property adjacent to I-575, at least 20 feet of the 40-foot undisturbed tree buffer along the western boundary should be, what?
That'd be 20 feet of the 40-foot landscape buffer would remain as undisturbed tree buffer.
Okay. And we'll use that same language when we get to the next one, okay? As to the property, the applicant shall show that all reasonable options have been considered to preserve a maximum amount of existing forest cover and green space, and shall submit a landscape plan showing tree removal mitigation and plantings that shall be finally approved by the District Commissioner prior to any disturbances. The applicant should also provide usable and functional open space permanently protected by easement or covenant as required by code. Such approval shall be subject to all staff comments and recommendations not in conflict with these recommendations. Finally, for clarity, the applicant shall restate other applicable stipulations not in conflict with these recommendations even though previously articulated. Number two, as a second alternative, I recommend approval of the rezoning request involving the PVC and OS tracks with certain restrictions that shall be articulated. However, subject to the county attorneys' further review and consideration of the question the appropriateness of an OS. Brian, if you can help me. Appropriateness of the OS designation in a CAC pursuant to?
Compliance with OS designation within a CAC.
Pursuant to Section 134-223?
Sounds fine. If that's your desire.
Is that a sentence, Joe? All right, and this should be, if the board is inclined to approve a proposal involving those tracks, then such approval should be subject to the following requirements and stipulations in addition to any others that may be approved by the Board of Commissioners. First, a corrected site plan shall be submitted by the applicant with staff verifying all details of the site plan and ensuring the site plan and stipulations recited by the applicant are correct. As to the PVC tract, townhomes shall be a max of 135 townhomes. The final specific site plan containing the exact number of townhomes shall be subject to the approval of the District Commissioner. The same provisions that were in the first alternative shall be number three as to the entire property, and then the language should track the language that we used in the first one related to the minimum undisturbed foot buffers to be required on Chastain Road, et cetera, et cetera. Pick that up. And then, number four, as to the PVC tract, no variances shall be permitted. Number five, as to both tracks, the applicant shall be required to show that all reasonable options have been considered to preserve a maximum amount of existing forest cover and green space, and shall submit a landscape plan showing tree removal mitigation and plantings that shall be finally approved by the District Commissioner prior to any disturbances. Number six, as to the OS tract of the project, if permitted, no more than one loading dock per 6,000 square feet shall be allowed, and structures shall be further limited as to square footage. Number seven, all staff comments and recommendations not inconsistent with these stipulations shall apply to both the PVC and OS portions of the project. Eight, all inconsistencies in the applicant's site plans and stipulations, if any, shall be corrected and reconciled prior to final presentation. Applicants' corrected stipulations shall be subject to consideration by the Board of Commissioners. Number eight, should the zoning request be approved, approval, this is number nine, should the zoning request be approved, approval shall be subject to all comments and recommendations of staff not in conflict with these stipulations.
All right, we have a restated motion with a second alternative.
Second for discussion again, and just to be clear, we're not asking the county attorney to change its position, we're just asking them, we're just saying that the Board of Commissioners should not give, approve this unless the county attorney changes its position. And we're not asking them to.
Right.
Thank you.
Motion? Second. Yeah, just restating that, do we have any further discussion?
Just to remind everyone that the electronic vote taker's not working, so voting has to be by hand, and call out the vote by hand if necessary, please.
Okay.
For the record, thank you.
All right, we'll call the question. Anybody in support, somebody on the other side, raise your hand. It looks unanimous. The motion passes 4-0. With that, let's take a 10-minute break and reconvene at 10:55.
Let's move on to our next district.
QuickTrip Corporation has, has and is in agreement with those comments and recommendations in full, primarily. The only really update from that is there is a shared access on Canton Road. And you can see it there, the NRC building, which is our adjacent owner, there's a shared access on Canton Road. That has now been recommended from DOT as perspective to be restricted in the sense that there would be no left turns out at that location. Right in, right out on Canton Road, you could also come left in, but they're going to restrict left outs. And they will just determine exactly how that is done, whether through pork chop signage, combination, striping. That would be done at plan review based on their more studied review operationally of how that would occur, and we've agreed to that. As also, as we reported to you, I know in the prior hearings, we had, for every prior hearing, we'd always discuss the adjacent NRC piece that you see on your screen before you. That's that small strip center that has the rest, the two restaurants and the yogurt place. And we reported at your last hearing, and then you saw the attorney for that owner stand up and state that we had reached that agreement, and we want to reiterate that we have reached that agreement with them in terms of a request by us if that could be some sort of somehow memorialized as part of the zoning conditions for this property, which is a separate property. If you recall, there is an existing easement agreement that benefits the subject property, that in red, and allows it to have interparcial access out through Canton Road. We have agreed and can agree as part of a zoning stipulation that we will enter into an amendment to that existing easement agreement in which we will provide increased designated parking to benefit the adjoining owner, both on the adjoining property as well as the subject property, our property, is how that additional designated parking will be provided, but that's subject to the consent of the adjoining owner. We have reached that agreement with them in principle and material terms, and subject to this going through, we would then work through that with them in detail to amend that existing easement agreement. We believe that's the most appropriate way to memorialize that agreement as far as the zoning context, because we are actually dealing with a property that's not part of your zoning jurisdiction base, the adjoining property, and not our property, but we are happy to enter into that condition as stated. Again, we have also, if we turn to the site plan itself, this is actually the circulation plan that shows how these two parcels circulate, both in and out, okay? And we've also been providing, this circulation plan likewise has been submitted as part of our application, has been reviewed by Cobb DOT and as part of that entire study and process. And I wanted to show it to you, just so you knew that existed, number one, that it had been submitted, number two, and number three, had been reviewed and as a part of our application. Again, we believe that this application, number one, is to a category, neighborhood retail commercial, NRC, in a neighborhood activity center. The adjoining property is owned NRC. This proposed use is consistent with the area, consistent with this neighborhood activity center. Any issues as it relates to the adjoining owner have been resolved. And that was always the focus, is the adjoining owner, making sure that we could coexist. And we always felt that we could and believed that we could, and we worked through those very diligently. And QuickTrip really worked through those issues very diligently with that adjoining ownership group, and we came to what we think is a very, very reasonable and generous agreement with them, addresses their needs and issues, and also allows for QuickTrip's operation and proposed use as far as they're concerned. We again think this is an excellent use of the property. This property is at a corner of a signalized major intersection of Canton Road and Jamerson Road. Convenience store with fuel cells is absolutely consistent here. Can't be argued. It is absolutely consistent here. Again, we do not believe that from a zoning and land use perspective, that deciding which properties get convenience stores with fuel cells in the middle of a neighborhood activity store, center, and which ones don't, when we have agreed with our adjoining owner, how we can coexist in a very productive fashion, is what zoning and land use should be about. So again, we would specifically and respectfully request your recommendation of approval subject to our stipulation letter, subject to this additional condition that we would have been asked to put into the record, and subject to staff's comments and recommendations as well, which by the way, were for approval, as it is absolutely consistent with the future land use plan and with staff's comments and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Carol Brown of Canton Road Neighbors. I want to submit for the record this updated petition with 141 signers in opposition. One of the people here in opposition that raised their hand today is the owner of the sit go across the street who will certainly be impacted. I'm, instead of speaking to you, I'm going to show this little presentation I put together last night. Can you start it for me? Gas station at the corner of Canton and Jamerson. This would add to QuickTrip's national total of over 1,031 stores. It would add to Canton Road's existing 11 gas stations, including the two just across the street. The 1.6 acre tract they planned to use was built for a drugstore in the early 2000s and has 71 parking spaces. QuickTrip plans to demolish the existing building and build a new 5,000 square foot convenience store and a canopy fronting Canton Road with 16 fuel pumps. It is adjacent to three small neighborhood businesses. The projected traffic to the site would be 2,057 visits per day, or a total of 4,114 in and out. There are two driveways. One is on Jamerson and is right in, right out due to the medians. The other is a small driveway on Canton Road, which would be shared by the three neighborhood businesses and the QuickTrip. Both driveways are too close to the signal at the intersection, based on current DOT The Canton Road driveway should be limited to right in, right out, to avoid dangerous left-hand exits to the north across southbound traffic. The QuickTrip will agree to this, but in practice, it will be difficult to stop some drivers. They will still have left turns into the Canton Road driveway and right in, right out. The attorney for QuickTrip states that the NRC rezoning fits the land use, and convenience store with fuel cells is a permitted use, which is true. He also states that this is an ideal location and will not affect nearby businesses. It may be ideal for QuickTrip, but how well does this site compare in relation to other new large QuickTrip or racetrack locations in Cobb? This is the newest QuickTrip at the intersection of Canton Road and Sandy Plains. It is on 2.2 acres and has three different access points. Two are from a road running between Sandy Plains and Canton, and the other is a right in, right out, just east of the signalized intersection. Several old buildings were demolished, and QT is not in close proximity to the buildings of another business. This is the QuickTrip at the intersection of Powder Springs and Sandtown Road. The signalized intersection also goes to Heathersett, a road with a driveway into QuickTrip and beyond to other businesses. QT also has a right in, right out access point on Powder Springs. The site is 1.97 acres, and QT is not in close proximity to other businesses. This is the newest racetrack at 4410 Canton Road, just seven tenths of a mile to the south. It is on a 2.65 acre site at the busy intersection of Canton and Shalaford. Initially, because of the busy Canton Road, left southbound turns were restricted, but ultimately did not prevent drivers from attempting left turns across several lanes of traffic. There were numerous accidents at the intersection, some serious, and a lengthy and expensive intersection redesign was undertaken. This racetrack has four possible points of access. Note the medians on Shalaford and on Canton Road. The racetrack on the southern end of Canton Road at 2337 also had major intersection improvements that came about in a 2016 rezoning application to expand and create a new main driveway to the signal at Liberty Hill. Racetrack demolished an old gas station adjacent and created an interparcial access road to Westerly Way, giving residents on the west side of Canton their first ever access to the busy Canton Road at a signalized intersection. The project was completed in February 2020 and was celebrated with a ribbon cutting Having seen these examples of the lot sizes and access points for the new larger convenience stores with 16 to 20 fuel pumps in Cobb, it is worth taking another look at the current site QuickTrip is considering. The Canton Road driveway will be especially challenging for large vehicles entering and exiting, as well as the projected high volume. There will be a constant stream of vehicles of all sizes entering and exiting the QuickTrip 24/7. This will certainly impact traffic on Canton and Jamerson. There are no median studies currently planned or programmed. This would take years. The attorney for QuickTrip feels that this is the ideal location. It may be ideal for the corporation in terms of potential future profits, but it is not likely to be a win-win outcome for the nearby businesses, for the owner of the sit go, for area drivers, and for the public who will be asked to bear the cost of median installation north and southbound on Canton Road at some point in the future. Adding 2,057 vehicles per day to the site will increase the need for median installation. A better, less intense use for this site will be found, hopefully one that will use the existing attractive brick building. In fairness to the property owner, the land should be given a viable zoning. Therefore, we respectfully ask that this be deleted to NRC for neighborhood retail and professional offices. Prohibited uses to include convenience store with fuel sales, other automotive-related businesses, contractor is a special exception, no outdoor storage or heavy equipment. Use and site plan to come to the Board of Commissioners as other business. Canton Road Design Guidelines to apply. Access on the Canton Road driveway to be limited to right in, right out. Staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. That was not mine. But come to think of it, I want to bring to everyone's attention that there is a very recent precedent for a request like this of deletion, and that would be Z24 SWI Investments on Canton Road in August with an application for convenience store with fuel sales mid-block on Canton Road. And a similar motion was made and approved by the Board of Commissioners in August, Z24. I would ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other opposition? All right, seeing and hearing none, this is in District 3, Commissioner Dance.
Leah Florim, DOT.
Good morning. Can you let us know where you are in terms of review and consideration of this matter?
Sure. Thank you. We have reviewed the submittal 1 and submittal 2 for this, and the traffic study requirement is considered satisfied at this point. They have addressed all the comments that we have made, and we feel that we have reached a consensus of what needs to be done on the driveway that was in contention. We have analyzed the data that they sent us. After they send us the text with the document, we also received data that goes into a simulation, and we have analyzed that, and we agree with their findings after going through that simulation. For driveway, I think it's driveway 1 on Canton Road, it appears to, to perform adequately in the future with the restrictions of the right, of the left out, restricting the left out. The left in is allowed because there are sufficient gaps between the cars moving southbound on Canton Road for someone to make that movement, and that many, as many lefts as they're expecting to have northbound on Canton Road onto the driveway. But yes, we do agree that the left out should be forbidden.
So they could turn left in, but somebody couldn't cross over, turn them left out?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's, that's where it is. So the, this traffic study is satisfied at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, what was, what is staff's recommendation on this?
The staff recommendation, Commissioner Dance, was to approve it, subject to the staff comments.
Okay. And if I can ask Mr. Moore a couple of questions?
Yes, happy to answer.
Okay. So on the inclusion in the stips of the, reference of that agreement, that's not currently there, but you're, you can do that before the VOC meeting?
As far as put it in the letter itself, yes, we'd be willing to put that in the letter immediately.
Okay.
So it'll be reflected in there.
In some, in some reference. And, and would it be possible at the VOC meeting to show what configuration changes have, would be occurring that might improve traffic flow across that parking lot?
Yes, we'll be able to show that.
Okay. And then would the applicant be willing to consider a reduction in the number of, of gas pumps?
Not at this point in time, no. We've got it at the minimum, that, we have it at the minimum for what it needs to be for this location.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Does anybody want to speak with anybody else? No? Me neither. Okay. So at this time, I would make a motion, and I would move to recommend approval, subject to the inclusion of the memorialization of the easement agree, and easement and parking agreement that has been referenced here today, and ask the applicant to present to the Board of Commissioners in their presentation, an effect of the traffic flow upon the site with reference to the conditions of this, of the, of that agreement. And approval then, subject to all staff comments and recommendations.
All right, we have a motion. Second?
Second.
Oh, I thought you were going to say something. Yeah, okay. Motion second, any discussion? All right, we'll call the question off the show by the side of my. Any opposition? Okay. It passes 4-0. On to the next case, John.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z48 of 2023, Oscar Factory. Request rezoning from PSC to NRC for an office in retail in Land Lot 677 of the 17th District. Property is located on the south side of Main Street, west of Loews Street. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for Z48, Oscar Factory? Is there anyone, is there anyone here opposed or rezoning case Z48? Okay, Mr. Vice Chair and Board, the applicant was here earlier, but he doesn't appear to be in the room now. So would the board want to move on to the next case and just come back to that one?
That would be fine. Do we want to check and see if he's outside real quick?
Okay. Is that there? Okay. So let's put that one on hold right now, come back to it.
That's fine.
And we'll just move on to the next case on the agenda, which is Z57.
Correct.
Okay, rezoning case Z57, Gordon Todd Spencer, request of rezoning from GC and CF to NRC for a laundromat, which is self-service and full service, in Land Lot 775 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east side of Oster Road, north of Amy Lane. Is the applicant present? The director, the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z57? Got two? The director showed there's two people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
I'm an architect representing my client, and yeah, I, I didn't know that there was going to be opposition, so I'm not, unfortunately not prepared to, with a presentation of any kind, although we did send drawings to the, I have a set of drawings for the, for the project with the conceptual, the full set of architectural drawings is not complete. But we're proposing to put a full-service, self-service, full and self-service laundromat 24-hour facility in this, at this site. It would basically be, you know, an upscale type of design, well-lit, small parking lot probably of about 15, 15 vehicles in the parking lot. The, the, there will be a covered entry and new storefront. There's an existing overhead door that enters into the facility that will be taken out and put a, a new storefront door, double set of storefront doors into facility. It will be, have a number of dryer, probably, I think there's a total of maybe 16, 18 washers and, and then about 12, I think 14 or 15 dryers with a seating area, vending machines, cash, you know, a, a secure office. It'll be manned 24/7 by somebody in, in, in the office, running the, the facility. And there's change machines that are in the wall, set in the wall for, for using, to use for the, the washers and dryers. And, and that's it, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition now.
Greetings. My name is Jill Gordon Evans. I am the homeowner of 3314 Rays Creek Road in the Magnolia Lane condominiums. And I have, my daughter currently lives in the home. I am also a homeowner in Smyrna. I'm co-owner of the home with my sister who lives in Acworth. We inherited the home from my mother who passed in 2020. We would like to keep the home and hopefully, you know, statistically, if our husbands pass before we do and we're, we have the luxury to retire, we would like to live in the home in perhaps 20 years. We have long-range plans to hopefully not need to, but it's better to have it and not need it. All the taxes are paid up on my home, my sister's, and this property. I respect that a person would like to, you know, own a business, profit from the business, and the location could stand to be improved. However, running any business 24/7 is difficult in this economy. I would find it kind of odd that you would be able to staff a laundromat 24/7. And, you know, regardless of whether or not the design is upscale or not, there's a laundromat on Smyrna Powder Springs Road around the corner from my home, which is near Adventure Outdoors in Smyrna. I'm not in the new subdivisions, I'm in an old 1960s normal person house. And there is often trash in the parking lot, you know, sometimes loud music. I don't think that laundromat has a lot of crime, but I do believe a 24/7 business such as a laundromat would invite crime, whether it's theft or drugs, or even though, you know, being unhoused is not a crime, vagrancy and such. And I believe it is to the detriment of the nice homes in Magnolia Lane if a 24-hour laundromat is permitted in that location. So it is my, I understand you have to apply the laws and codes as they are written to the zoning and to the applicant, as well as to the other citizens equally. So I respectfully request that, you know, you take into consideration, there are not just homeowners, but there are apartments down the street. There are, there's a trailer park right there, which, yes, there, the laundromat could be beneficial to some people, but I do not think it needs to be a 24-hour a day operation that could end up being a law enforcement, code enforcement headache, as well as diminish, you know, the property values of the homeowners that live nearby. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nikki T, and I am the Magnolia Lane Community Association President. I also agree with the owner at 3314 Rays Creek Road. I actually live at 3328 Rays Creek. I, I'm very concerned about potential crime. My community is directly across the street. It was actually designed originally for 55-plus, so many of my neighbors are seasoned and are retired. In fact, immediately to the left in the community, one of my neighbors actually walks her dog, and she's on a walker. So I just don't want anyone across the street to potentially case my community and see that we are real, real targets for potential crime. Also, just one mile down the road is another laundromat, M&amp;S Laundromat. It is open from 7:00 AM until 9:00 PM. Our community is very car-dependent. That's ours, we have a 3%, a 3 score out of 10, so we're very car-dependent. So if we have to get in the, the car to go to the laundromat, we can go down the street to the corner of Hicks and Oster Road. So I am an entrepreneur myself, and I, I will support a laundromat that obviously complies with the code, but also takes in consideration potential crime, as my other neighbor suggested as well. I am very, very concerned about someone coming across the street while waiting on their laundry and potentially compromising either myself or my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, there's no other opposition. This is in District 4. I'm sorry, somebody's raising their hand back there. Ma'am, I think you're going to need to be sworn in to speak.
Good morning. I'm, I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed laundromat.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, if we could get your name for the record.
Oh, Ms. Simmons. 3404 Double Eagle Drive in Marietta. Thank you. Sorry. My apologies. I did receive a letter, the family received a letter from Mr. Todd Spencer, and I did reach out and talk to him, and I asked a couple of questions that I asked and I propose, I posed here, is there was no public meeting. And when I asked Mr. Spencer about that, he said it was not required. And I've sat in meetings here before, and I've seen where other petitioners have asked, reached out to the community, saying, what, here's what I'm doing, this is what you can expect. So I was a little surprised, and I would really implore the commission to maybe require of the petitioner to sit down with the neighbors and have a conversation about this laundromat and what benefit it brings. The other thing was it was defined as an upscale laundromat. Thought it was a very odd way of saying it, and as earlier petition, uh, people have, have testified, that there is a laundromat that looks quite lovely, so I don't know if we need a upscale laundromat. They talk about 24/7 operations and staffing, you know, that's what they say now. I'm just concerned that over time, that might wane, and then what happens, and what recourse would the neighborhood have? Community outreach and needs assessment. Was there, my question to Mr. Spencer by, by mail, which he may or may not have received, so I apologize for that, because I just did it on the 4th, was there any outreach to gauge the community's need for another laundromat within? within an existing laundromat less than a mile away? And a, a number of the developments that are there and some that are just coming up are come equipped with washer dryer as a part of the, the unit. So is there demand for this facility? And then security concerns, which was mentioned, mentioned earlier, which I will mention again, given that laundromats typically operate as a cash business, what measures are planned to maintain a high level of security? This is particularly important to deter potential robberies, ensure safety of both customers and residents in the vicinity. And then lastly, the, the, on the one hand, it's nice to see that someone wants to develop and take care of this distressed building, but it does a but a development and I don't see any buffer there for the community that is right, very, right next to it. It's right off the highway. I don't, I don't see how people normally or easily get onto the property. And if I read the diagram correctly, it looks as though there's public seating that faces the highway, which I think was a bit odd. And is there any kind of mitigation? I don't know what the community benefit is and is there any mitigation around the, making the area look better? I mean by, like trees and other things of that nature. So I respectfully ask that for your consideration. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any, any other opposition? Okay. This is in District 4, which is my district, so I'll lead the discussion. So if I could have the applicant, Mr. Spencer, come back up? I know, I know you indicated that you were not aware of, of the opposition until today.
I did have one call from one lady, so I, I, I was aware of the call, but I didn't, I didn't know she was, it was, there was that serious of an opposition. So I mean, I plan to address all of her concerns.
Okay. So just a couple of questions. It's been concerns about crime. And if you could just speak to how you might mitigate that, that issue of concern identified by the community, that's one thing. And then the other thing, if we could go back to the area real quick, I'm sorry. Can we blow that up just slightly? Yeah. So if I'm looking, actually slide a little bit to the, the other way. Yeah. Yeah. A little more, slightly, yeah. So if I'm looking at the property line there, the northern boundary, it runs right, it looks like a building or a structure is right on top of it. And you go a little further back, there's a structure that's squarely on the property there. So my concern would obviously be those, those particular issues would need to be addressed, I think. And there might even be a third building that looks like it's on the property line as well. Are you, were you aware of?
I was, I was not aware of, the, we're only using the very front, front area of the property.
But we're rezoning the entire piece of property.
Correct, correct. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. But going back to my first question and just some of the comments you've heard here today about crime, security and so forth, how would you, what are your plans to address that sort of issue?
Well, obviously, one, one issue would be lighting, you know, keeping the, the area well lit and no, have no dark corners that people could, could hide in and, and wait, wait for unsuspecting people, that kind of thing. So we need, lighting would be, lighting design would be a big part of the issue. You know, not making the lighting so huge and glaring that it affects neighbors, but making it safe, you know. So that, that's going to be an important thing to consider. Other is going to be staff members, you know, educated on how to keep people safe and that kind of, and, and have a staff, staff member be able to see cameras maybe and also another issue, have cameras, have, you know, have, have a staff member that's in the office be able to see the entrances and be able to see what's going on in the facility and, and, you know, the cameras would probably help with that. So.
One of the things was expresses that this will be a 24-hour operation and just looking at staffs, staff has recommended approval, but one of the conditions they have is that you would be limited in terms of your hours of operation from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at night.
You know, yeah, I'd have to talk to my client about that, what they, how they feel about that. I mean, I, you know, I, I mean, maybe there's not, I don't know what, I don't know if other laundromats have done studies and see if there's a demand for this kind of service all, all night long. I don't, maybe it's not an important business concern that he'd be open 24/7. I, I don't know. I'm gonna have to talk to my client about that.
And, and it's been mentioned here too, that there's a, a laundromat about a mile away. I'm, I'm assuming your applicant, or I'm sorry, your client has assessed the market demand or need in the area?
Well, this, this laundry, and if, I wish I had the concept, the photos of, of other laundromats, we're trying to pattern this design off of, but it's not, you know, it's definitely not your, your typical laundromat design. I mean, this is gonna be, it's gonna have a mural on the front wall. It's gonna have, you know, high-end, you know, flooring material and, and, and it's gonna be, you know, again, well-lit tables, chairs, vending machines, things like that, that a lot of other laundry, laundry, laundromats don't have, you know. So it's just a little bit of a, it's not your typical laundromat that you would see on, on, in most cities and most areas. So.
Okay. Those are all my questions for the applicant. I want to give my fellow commissioners a chance to see if they have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Chair. Is, is this something where you'd like to check with your client to see if this is even something he's willing to consider if we restrict the hours?
Um, that's obviously a very important concern, but I mean, I mean, if you're saying that, that there's no way that you would allow it to be 24/7, or you would allow it to be 24/7 with stipulations or concerns and design, design, design considerations, or what are we, what are we saying here?
I'll, I'll answer that. I, I think from, from the conversation that's gone on, from your presentation and then what I've heard from the community, I think there may be a benefit to, to holding this and having some additional conversations with the community. And I'm looking to some of the people that are, that got up and spoke to see if, if you would be agreeable to meeting with this gentleman and his client to have that conversation about what he's proposing to do, to see if you can come to some agreement possibly on what might be acceptable to both parties. We, we don't meet in January, so the earliest with this could be reconsidered would be in February. February 6th, I believe is the date.
Okay.
So I'm inclined to do that, but, but in doing that, I, I think it needs to be specific in terms of, I heard a few things, operating hours needs to be really considered by your, by your client.
Right.
I think the, the, the issue about the property line going, or buildings encroaching onto the property, I think needs to be addressed as well.
I, I'm not sure, I'm clear on exactly what you're saying there.
Well, we've got, you've got part, you've got buildings that are joining your property here that are on your property. I'm not sure how that impacts things. And I'm looking to staff over here from a zoning perspective.
Yeah. I'm actually, I have a, I don't know what that building is. I, to be honest with you, I, I've, I'll have to go back, because again, we've, I've always just been focused on the first, you know, 33% of the, or it's less than half of the property that they're gonna be using. So.
Looking to staff.
And I think what, what, what the commissioner's saying is, you know, if this is held for 60 days, you probably need to look at the entire property line to see what of your neighbor's property is on your property. Because it looks like there's partial mobile homes or buildings on your property.
Okay.
So that, those encroaches need to be addressed somehow.
Right.
It may be selling the property, or it may be an easement, or it may just, you know, just, just have them remove it.
Right. Got it. Okay.
Okay.
So in addition to the operation of buildings that are approaching onto your client's property, um, I think it was something was mentioning about landscaping, maybe the front of the property, to make it look a little bit more appealing from the roadway.
Yeah.
Something that should be considered as well. So that would be, that would be my recommendation, that we hold it until our February 2024 scheduled zoning hearing.
Okay. So, so the meeting, the, the final meeting that's coming up in December, so we, we wouldn't be able to be part of that.
Correct. That is correct, because I'm encouraging you to perhaps exchange contact information with the, the individuals that were, that spoke earlier before you. You guys schedule a time to, to sit down and, or Zoom meeting, or however you want, Microsoft Teams or whatever.
Got it.
And have that conversation about this, your, what you're proposing to do. They can share their, their concerns and you can also, you and your client can also have input as well.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry.
Just, would it be, would, there was not a stipulation letter prepared for this? Is that correct?
No, there was not. And so a stipulation letter would, detailing all these things would be helpful to have when we come back in February.
Okay. So a stipulation letter from, from you to me on what you're stipulating I need to have, or what?
Well, let's back up. So staff has already put together some, they've already recommended approval. There are some, some stipulations in here.
Right.
You would need to provide us with some additional stipulations beyond what's included in staff's requirement and your site plan. And if you're gonna do landscaping, landscaping needs to be noted on there.
Right.
The specific, you know, we could zone this to a specific site plan, showing the landscaping, lighting, you know, agreeing to lighting, those sorts of things.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Commissioner Hughes, one other thing, just, is the applicant gonna be operating this, or are they leasing this to an operator?
Um, no, they're gonna be operating it, I believe. So that's a good question. I need to, I need to clarify that. I honestly don't know for sure. So.
And that's a great question from the commissioner. That, that's something we need, we need to understand.
Okay.
Because these stipulations will run with this zoning and we need to be sure the stipulations apply to the appropriate entity.
Right. And if that was a lease and that tenant vacated and then there's no one operating it, what happens?
Right.
So that's just, you want to make sure, if you can address that or clarify that in the stipulation letter as well, that just being asked as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, so my next step would be to gather all this information, meet with the opposition, and then go, come to, and then do I need to schedule, just come to the meeting and then in February, or?
I think the planning staff or zoning staff will be back in touch with you. They, they will just continue this as, as a matter of course, to the next meeting in February.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
With that, I would recommend that we, my recommendation is that we hold this until the February 6th, 2024 meeting, to give the applicant time to meet with the community and to clarify some questions with his, with his client with respect to the operation of this business.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Motion passes 4-0. It's the pleasure of this board. We want to try to take one more case before lunch. We'll call the, we'll call the, call the next case, John.
Okay. Resonating case Z60 MRE Canton LLC requests to rezonate from GC to NRC for a convenience store at Fuel Sales in Land Lot 60 of the 16th District. Property is located on the east side of Canton Road and on the north side of Jamerson Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resounding case Z60? The director shows no one opposed.
All right. Go ahead and continue. Go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioners, again, Kevin Moore here on, on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. As you've noted and looked, where this property is identified, it's at the intersection of Jamerson and Canton Road. It is diagonal across the street from the application just a few mon, moments ago. This location is an existing convenience store with Fuel Sales and has been for a very long time. Again, it finds itself in the same context, and that is it's Zone General Commercial. It's located in Neighborhood Activity Center. What's really interesting about this owner and applicant, because it's, it's owner slash applicant, they have owned this location, which is, you know, a favorite. It's a smaller convenience store that's been there for a very long time. And because of the quick trip across the street and what they were gonna bring to this intersection, it has resulted in this owner of the convenience store and Fuel Sales that they want to upgrade their property. They're gonna be, have to be competitive, want to be competitive, but to do so, they need to upgrade their situation and their facilities, which they plan to do. Unfortunately though, because it's Zone General Commercial and a Neighborhood Activity Center, you have to rezone it first before that can occur. So I just want to turn over to the site plan, just to walk you through real quickly what they're proposing from that standpoint. I just to orient you, this is Jamerson and Canton Road. The existing building, when you saw it before, and canopy is basically one larger building here, with a portion of the building here. What their plan is, is to remove the, tear down or demolish the existing convenience store building, and then we'll, and rebuild a brand-new one of approximately 3,750 square feet will be a new convenience store aspect of it. The existing canopy and fuels, tanks will remain where they are today. Okay, so there's no, no renovating that as far as relocation. There'll be just renovation of the canopy and an entirely new convenience store located here. It's pushed back away from its existing location in the center. It's pushed back towards the rear of the property, which is where the CSX railroad, railroad is. Push that back to the back allows for additional parking opportunities there and better flow throughout. But I think it's important to note, you have what is a dark, old rite aid across the street that's being improved, and it has had an immediate effect. And hopefully it will be improved if the Board of Commissioners agree, but it has an immediate effect on this particular owner to want to upgrade their facilities, which is, and spend considerable sums to do some. In terms of DOT and transportation, a submittal 2 traffic study is underway. That had to be updated with the initial comments and recommendations from DOT. Currently, these are, because they are essentially existing access drives that have been there for a long time, essentially it function is full access movement for both Jamerson and Canton Road. It's proposed that similarly, these two access points will have limitations because of their proximity to the actual intersection and that they are now being studied to have limitations, which we've agreed with, which would include limiting that same left-out movement that you heard before from those locations, which would help with overall stacking both internally and safety on the roads themselves. And we've agreed with Cobb County DOT's recommendations and comments thus far, and have also undertaken the additional step of the submittal 2 study based on these updated recommendations from Cobb DOT. It's hoped that you would follow your staff's recommendation, which is to recommend approval, subject to certainly all of the departmental comments, which would include Cobb DOT, which we're in agreement with, and as stated previously, that updated submittal 2 traffic study is underway already, based on Cobb DOT's updated comments, which wanted us to make sure we included those restrictions on the access to perform that study. And that's underway. I respectfully request your recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. There was no opposition, correct? There was none? Okay.
There, there is none.
Okay. Thank you. This is in District 3. Commissioner Dance.
I would. So you can anticipate it too?
Digi Florim, DOT.
Okay. So where are we on this property?
So on this one, we have reviewed the first submittal of the traffic study and we have provided comments to them, and they're addressing those comments. And we have requested a submittal 2, which will tell us the impact of their traffic analysis upon the traffic overall. And as was mentioned, we have recommended the restriction on the Canton Road access because it is too close to the intersection. Our code, as you already know, it reads that we have, if anything, any driveway is within 250 feet of a signalized intersection, it has to have restrictions on the movements. So we are restricting it to right-in, right-out, and left-in since similarly to-
Right-in, right-out on which road?
On Canton Road. Jamerson, on Canton Road. Jamerson is already restricted by the median. So it is right-in, right-out, and it will remain right-in, right-out.
Okay. Both intersections or both drives are right-in, right-out?
Except for the Canton Road will be allowed to have the left-in as well. It is already within a two-way left-turn lane.
Okay. You're comfortable with that?
We might revise our comments after we receive the submittal 2.
Right. You expect that soon?
I hope so. Yes. I hope so, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Commissioner, so just note that if, to the extent this store is able to upgrade and maintain, that would provide folks an alternative if they needed gas, and they're in this area and they're heading north on Canton Road, whether as a result of coming across the intersection of Jamerson from Canton, or whether they already took a left-hand turn. You know, either way, hopefully this would provide folks an alternative where they wouldn't have to try to take illegal left-hand turns in and out while traveling north on Canton Road to get gas. So this could be a good thing for that reason. Can't remember another time we've ever had this kind of thing happen, two competing businesses diagonally across the road from each other on the same day, but it's interesting. Would note that I would love to see if it was possible, this turn in off of Canton Road, if it was possible to move it closer to the property line and further away from the intersection. I think that would be safer for everybody concerned, because especially with the left-hand turn traffic coming from Jamerson onto Canton. But other than that, this could be a good thing.
Can you address this last comment?
Sure, and that is a good idea. They will have to consider what the driveway distance is between the adjacent, the next driveway north of them. And I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, not that I remember, but there has to be a 50-foot distance between the driveways. So depending on that driveway, that would be, no, it looks like it is very close. If they put it at their line, it would be too close to the other, to the next one. So they're restricted by their frontage.
Is that your final decision?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay.
Do a share driver.
Please, no. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone else I want to call, does anyone else want to? Okay. So I would propose that we hold this consistent with waiting for the submittal two and the final discussion with DOT. But I think it's, I'm agreeing with Mr. Boeing. Seems like a good solution for the road, potentially. So, motion to hold.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a proper second. Any discussion? Call a question. You want to check and see if Z48 applicant is here? Oscar.
Is the applicant here for resounding case Z48, Oscar Factory?
Thank you.
And he's going to be here in the afternoon, Mr. Vice Chair.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We will break for lunch and reconvene at 1:00.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome back to the December 5th, 2023 Cobb County Planning Commission zoning here. John, if you recall, our next case, please.
Okay, before we start that, is the applicant here for Z48 Oscar Factory? Not yet? Okay, go on to the next case. Next case is resounding case Z65 of 2023, the Parkway 750 Kennesaw LLC and the Parkway 760 Kennesaw LLC. Request rezoning from CRC to RRC for mixed use development consisting of apartments in a hotel in land lots 651 and 718 of the 16th district. The property is located at the terminus of Cobb Place Boulevard, east of Ernest Barrett Parkway. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resounding case Z65. Let the record show, no one opposed?
I bought them all lunch, no, just kidding. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Parks Huff with Sam's Larkin and Huff, and I represent the applicant in regards to this case before this morning or this afternoon. This case is actually on the consent agenda, so without public opposition, I'll go through the presentation in hopefully kind of an expedited fashion, and we'll get to the points that are concerns and questions from the planning commission. This is a, if we go to the GIS showing the subject property first. So this is a collection of three hotels. There's two older, what I consider to be a motel. Their exterior door, two-story, those are the two that are in an L shape. And then in the middle is a brand-new Candlewood Suites, just completed, just opened. A significant investment by my client. He owns all three of these buildings. And this resulted in a question of, you know, what do you do with the older-style motels? He is, my client JDH has been in the motel business for many years in real estate. And there's no brand that would take on a two-story exterior door. So continuing as a hotel really doesn't work. So he came to me with the idea of converting the hotels to multifamily, and I know it's something that y'all have looked at. And I wanted to kind of explain how this works and why it really makes a lot of sense, and why specifically this makes sense. One, it's, my client's got three hotels. We're converting two to multifamily. His interest is maintaining the viability and the financial integrity of all three units. And so he wouldn't be doing something that's going to hurt his Candlewood Suites that he just spent several million dollars on. This is in Barrett Parkway in the Town Center CID, so there is a great demand for housing. We all know, we all heard about the housing need in the area. And one of the challenges of housing is how to create new housing using new material, new construction costs that has some affordability. So what you, the best thing to do is to find an old structure that's already built and convert it to a different type of housing. And that's what we're doing here. We're converting it from, you know, daily rental to monthly or yearly leases, you know, 12-month lease, that's what this is. And the individual, their rooms, and I'm going to be candid, they're small rooms, but that is a specific market. You have plenty of people that are, come into town for long training, corporate relocations, there's all sorts of reasons. Military, a lot of times you'll have military people who are transferred to Dobbins, but their home is somewhere else, and they need a place to live. So there's a lot of reason to have this type of studio apartment rental in the area. The other thing I want to point out, and go zoom out just a little bit, is, and we've had good discussions with the CID, zoom out on the GIS just a little bit. That Greer's Chapel to the south, this property does not access Greer's Chapel, but it's worth noting that that is the flyover bridge that's being constructed right now, so that access gets over to Town Center Mall. We don't access it car-wise, except for you'd have to go down and circulate around, around the bowling alley and the Costco to get back to that. So it is accessible to that, creates that opportunity there. Someone can live here, and we, you know, transportation is always one of the things we talk about. We have public transportation. You want to put housing where people can actually utilize it. You can literally live here and access public transportation, access jobs, because there's jobs in the area. And so it is a way to be able to actually live without full dependency on a car. So it's putting it in a place that makes sense. The need is there, the opportunity to repurpose an older structure that has passed its useful life as an older motel to become a studio apartment for people who need that type of housing. These will, one of the great things about it, they will be totally redone interior-wise. They will be furnished, TV, appliances, all that's, you know, brand-new. And when you rent it, you're renting for one fee, that's everything, that's utility. So if you, for example, if you're renting an apartment around here, you've got your apartment rent, but then you're paying the utilities, turning them on, turning them off, all those kind of things. This is all-inclusive. It's one of the advantages of this type of situation. So again, you can see the proximity to the interstate, you can see the proximity within the heart of the Town Center CID. You know the need is there, and this is a great opportunity that, to be able to try out some other way to create some affordability in housing. And this is what we're here to do. It was on the consent agenda. I think there were some questions that I hope I addressed about access. I talked to the CID to make sure that they understood, and they had no objection to it. They recognized the need for housing in the area, in this type of housing. And also, they did have a question about traffic, and I pointed at making sure that we aren't creating a traffic problem. Couple things. One is that as a hotel, it has a higher traffic count than as multifamily rental. And you're definitely coming there via car if you're renting a hotel room. But literally, you can, you don't have to be car-dependent, because you could live and work real close by. You can access transit. And as we try to make transit more accessible for all, we need to be thoughtful about where we put our housing so that transit can actually be used appropriately. So I will be glad to address your questions and concerns. I got some time left, but since it was on the consent agenda, I think I've addressed the questions that had been raised by some folks, and I think I'll address those. So be glad to answer any questions you have. If we go to the image, oh, I'm sorry. This is an image of how that hotels would be repurposed, and it is going to be a remodel that includes changing the color, roof, a lot of safety equipment, the safety design will come into, make sure that it's safe. Sprinklers will have to be added. They're not, it's not in there now. So all those things will have to be upgraded and changed. And so it will look very, very different. And this is an architectural image that we just got yesterday showing the type of remodeling that will be being done there, so.
All right, thank you. Since there is no opposition, this is in District 3. Commissioner Dance will lead our discussion.
Can you just stay there a second, Parks? So the hotel is in that center triangle?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and y'all have a timeframe?
Yeah, I mean, they will, I mean, if approved zoning-wise, they will, and they've been working on the architecture, with the architect to come up with the full design. So they're going to be kicking the full design off, getting it through plan review. As soon as they get, pull their building permits, they will be remodeling these. So probably six, six months or less. Less.
Okay, and I mean, so you have another property there, but do you have a coordinated, like, safety plan?
Yes.
What would that look like?
Yeah, I mean, they're going to redo all the lighting in the area to ensure that the lighting is getting all the appropriate areas. They will be doing, redoing the landscaping and ensure that landscaping is done in such a way that there's visibility to all areas. And again, the Candlewood being in the middle, I mean, that was a significant, significant investment, tens of millions of dollars, that, that's what his concern is, is ensuring the integrity of that, that value. And by doing these, he's raising the value of that Candlewood and raising the value of this property and introducing another housing type in the area.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got a question. The newly renovated structures, one-two bedroom, will there be amenities?
They're all, they're all studios.
They'll all be studios.
They'll all be studios. And the, they will be, he's converting some of the spaces to provide some amenity, workout areas and things like that. So yeah, that, that programming hasn't been totally defined yet, but there will be amenities offered onsite.
Okay. Commissioner Beloy.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. To what extent will you have short-term rental possibilities here?
Yeah, this is, they will require full leases, 12-month leases, and so it won't be short-term rental. And he said something earlier that I had not really thought about, which is when, when you have multifamily rental, you have a full background check of the individual that's renting. They do, you know, job background check, income, all those kind of credit scores, because they have to be three times the value, the rent value and income. So they have to show that, as opposed to when it's now, you know, a hotel. People walk up, there's no background check. They can't do that as a motel. So anyone who asks for a room gets a room. So there'll be background checks and long-term leases for each, each.
Would you be fine with the stipulation of no rentals of 30 days or less? Would you be fine with that?
We would be totally fine with that.
Thank you.
And I didn't even have to look at my client.
Any other questions for Mr. Parks? Okay. Commissioner Dance.
Mr. Peterson, what was y'all's recommendation?
Commissioner Dance, the staff would recommend the board, the planning commission, approve the request, subject to the staff recommendation. That's in the zoning analysis.
Okay, very good. Then I move for approval, subject to the zoning analysis and staff comments and recommendations. And with the proviso that there be no rentals for 30 days or less permitted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second. Any discussion?
Would you like to put that back on consent agenda?
Yes.
That was my question.
Yeah, that's it. Bingo.
Yep, motion second. We'll put this back on consent. Any discussion? All show that side of eye. Eye passes four-zero. John, our next case, please, up.
Okay.
Do you want to check to see if Z48 is?
Is the applicant here for Z48 Oscar Factory, he is present? So we'll go ahead and call that one back up. Resoning case Z47 of 2023, excuse me, resoning application to Z48 of 2023 Oscar Factory. Request rezoning from PSC to NRC for an office in retail in Land Lot 677 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Main Street, west of Loews Street. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resoning case Z48? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good afternoon, sir.
Hello, how are you?
Good, great, thank you. If you could state your name for the record.
Oscar Factory.
Thank you, and you could just share a little bit about your project and what you're trying to do?
Well, I'm a janitorial, commercial cleaning service, and wanted to have my own office or whatso. So rebuild the property that's currently on there right now and make it pretty much an office base area where I hold my equipment, supplies, tools, materials there. That's pretty much basis of it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay.
There is no opposition for this particular case. Commissioner, this is in District 2, so Commissioner Anderson will lead our discussion.
Excellent. So, Mr. Factory, as you see on the proposal, you're, I guess, looking to add in addition, no building? Is that correct?
In the back area, yes, sir. Yes.
Got it. And then the, the actual, oops, sorry, I'm spilling stuff here. Yeah. So you would be looking to rebuild the existing building, footprint?
Correct.
Okay, and then add this addition on the back?
Exactly.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review the staff's comments and recommendations as part of their prepared staff analysis?
Little not, I'm not gonna, I haven't really reviewed it like I, you know, should have, but.
Okay.
I looked over, yes, sir.
Okay, and so, just, I'll just read those off to you, just so you're aware of kind of what's,
Okay.
you know, the recommendation was for the staff analysis.
Okay.
And just, just to confirm that those are all right there. So, recommendation was for the staff, not for this body, but from the staff, was approval, subject to final site plan, adherence to landscape enhancement strip regulations, office use only, and no outdoor storage. And then recommendations from the fire department, water and sewer division, and stormwater management division. Just wanted to confirm that, um, is there anything in those stipulations that are, who are, you're not amenable to?
No, I agree. I agree to those circumstances.
Okay, great. And then, if you could just stay there for one moment, I just wanted to ask from the planning division, John, can you just confirm whether the variances that were requested here are being granted? Or was there a recommendation to grant those variances? It does not seem as though it was specifically.
Yeah, and it's not very clear in the recommendation, but the staff would be supportive of the three variances he's asking for.
Okay, and those were allowing you to do parking and maneuvering on a non-hardened surface, just gravel, reducing your front setback from 40 feet to 26 feet along the northern property line, and reducing the minimum parking requirement from 13 spaces to 10 spaces? Okay, and those, okay, so those are deemed to be, I guess, first based on the staff analysis, to be approved?
Approved.
Okay, okay, all right. And then, so in light of that, just wanted to open it up to any of my other fellow commissioners, if they had any questions of the applicant? Great, I don't have any further questions of you at this time. You can feel free to be seated.
Okay. Okay.
Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions of any other staff?
I don't.
Okay, great. Well, with that, then, I would like to make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments and recommendations. And with one additional step, I guess not a step, clarifying, variances, as requested, will be permitted.
And you'll put that on consent?
And yes, I'd like to put that on consent.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Beloy, any discussion and call a question? Passes four-zero.
Is Mr. Factory still here? Yeah, just come back in two weeks at nine o'clock in the morning, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, and Mr. Chairman and Board, the next resoning case also has a companion special land use permit with it, with the board's desire to hear both cases together, and just make that promotion.
Yes, please.
Resoning case Z66, 41 Parkatoy and Self-Storage Inc., requests a rezoning from GC and R20 to LI for climate-controlled self-storage facility in Land Lot 2 and 37 of the 20th District. The property is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road, together with its companion special land use permit, SLUP 8. 41 Parkatoy and Self-Storage Inc. requests a special land use permit for a climate-controlled self-storage in Land Lot 2 and 37 of the 20th District. Property is located on the east side of Cobb Parkway, south of Third Army Road. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here who is opposed to resoning case Z66 or SLUP 8? Two. Okay, let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward. We sworn in.
Good afternoon. Again, for the record, my name is Parks Huff. The law firm is Sam's Larkin and Huff, and I represent Parkatoy in relation to this rezoning and SLUP application. This is a expansion of an existing business. So if you're on Cobb Parkway going north, going towards Bartow County, Bartow County is not too far, much further to the north. On the right-hand side, you will see a business called Parkatoy. And it is a, has a combination of outdoor boat and RV storage and climate, or in single-story storage facilities, not the multi-story tall ones, but the, a single-story building for indoor storage. And so my client, and that property is owned LI. My client owns all these properties. The existing business is on property zone light industrial, hence our request to apply for expansion of it using the LI category. The staff has recommended deleting it to NRC. That's consistent with the land use plan, which has it as neighborhood activity center in this area. So that was their request. We don't, we're not going to quibble about which is the appropriate category. We're really just focusing on the use. So if you want to delete it to that, that's fine with us. Just do want to point out that it's light industrial out front, and you can see a couple to our north is heavy industrial. And then also GC, a portion of the property is already zoned, general commercial, and there's general commercial to the north. To the south is VFW and also Wellstar and a church to, going to the south. So we are surrounded by core of engineer land that wraps our site. That's the, our, our designated properties is owned by the Corps of Engineers. The Corps, when they created the Lake Altoona, they also acquired a significant amount of buffer for that lake. That's the whole point of acquiring the additional land. Obviously, that's, that land's not used for the lake itself, but it is what they did to create the buffering for the lake. And my client, again, there's a demand for storage. I know this board struggles with storage in the wrong location, and you get flooded with a bunch of people asking for storage all the time. And you're often challenged with whether to approve it or not. The reality is, if you expand an existing storage use in an appropriate way, that's actually a better way to handle the storage needs for residents in the area. So this is what we're talking about here, is just simply expanding on that, what's outlined in yellow. And I show the site plan here. So again, you're showing, it's on site. Keep going. Here we go. So to the left is 41, the outdoor storage and the existing storage units that are shown right there on the top part of that, those two buildings there. So what you would do is just continue between those two buildings, get to the back part of the property. There's a stream that would have to be crossed. And stormwater, of course, points out that we will have to do the, all the stormwater requirements and crossing state water. And then we get to the back portion of the property. And it's, it's basically surrounded on the back and the south side by a combination of core and existing LI property. That LI goes all the way to the middle of that rec, uh, triangle, or rectangle, excuse me. So the bottom part is already zoned all LI, so it goes all the way deep into the, to the subject property. And that portion, that's already, as I said, zoned GC. So what we're talking about is simply rezoning this and getting a special land use permit. Single-story storage units. It is designed so that you have a liner building. You can see the liner building, so there's property to the north. And that would in fact create a shield so that you've got, you know, the storage is internal to the property and nothing external. I believe staff has recommended that we, on that north side, that we honor those buffers there, and we would be agreeable to that. Just wanted to share, and I'm not gonna. So again, you can see how this fits into the area. I understand the people here that are in opposition have property off McCoy Road to the north, which you can see, see right there. But we'll basically have core land that creates this buffer. And a combination to the north is a property that's got a split zoning of GC and R20. But we really aren't impacting other property owners. And we think that this is an appropriate use. Again, the opportunity to expand into the existing storage prevents the new storage that everyone complains about. And so that's what we have here, is just an opportunity to expand. A successful business, to go further back in the property. Again, it's already partially zoned GC, the front part's zoned light industrial. This, in a planning sense, makes a lot of sense. Reason why your staff recommended approval with some conditions, and we're fine with those conditions, and reducing, you know, bumping it down to NRC. Again, I'm not worried about the zoning category as much as the use. It just is odd to put NRC behind light industrial, but that's just my opinion. But we're glad to engage with, if the opposition has anything that we can address, we'd be glad to try to do that. But I think they're just generally have other concerns that we may not be able to address. But we have been willing and able to try to address anybody's concerns. And we just ask that you recommend approval of this to the board of commissioners, allow a successful business to expand onto property that they already own in an appropriate way, and just, and fulfill the needs of. and just, and fulfill the needs of storage, which we all hate that we need, but the reality is, obviously, people wouldn't be spending money building storage units if people weren't using them. So, the, we, we may not like the fact that we rely upon separate storage units in our lives, but we all do, even business-wise. We have our storage for our business, our off-site storage. So, I appreciate your time and your thoughtful consideration in this case.
Thank you. We'll hear from the opposition now.
Okay, this is my first time doing this.
If you could state your name.
Gail Willman, and I am a property owner on McCoy Road. The first thing I want to say is, I think we're more concerned about the zoning than we are the use, so we don't want the zoning to get started and, and continue there, but I'm just going to read because, you know, I'm nervous a little bit. Okay. I was going to say Cobb County has a rich history, beginning with our visionary Commissioner Herbert McCollum, if anyone knows about him, who brought our colleges and our airport here, and our amazing churches, which have blessed our hearts. Thank you, Nelson Price. Also, our strong judicial system. Thank you, Judge Hames. Cobb County has been a model and a desirable community. As a real estate agent in Acworth, I know Cobb County is one of the most desirable counties in Georgia. People request it, and it's the one they want to own property in. Our north Cobb community benefits our county in two ways. We have survival and recreation. We finally realize that we have the lake. It's our responsibility to protect our unique community purpose. We all benefit from the water that comes from Lake Altoona for survival, and our drinking water, and the recreation aspect of Lake Altoona. It puts us on the map. I like what Mrs. Dance said earlier of another property discussed earlier today. She said it's a critical matter, an area worthy of our protection. Light industrial zoning, or more of it, is a detriment to Lake Altoona. Let's keep our lake desirable and clean, and our property values up, and I say all this because I have grandchildren there. I'm keeping them in mind for future Cobb Countyans, and I hope they choose to stay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Darren Willman. I'm a resident of McCoy Road, Fifty-Six-Fifty McCoy Road. One of the individuals that was here handed me this letter, and he wanted me to give this for record of the signatures along McCoy Road. I think it represents about eighty percent of the people on McCoy Road. I'm in opposition to this Z sixty-six, twenty-two-three, citing the site as unsuitable, and it's appro, is unsuitable and is not appropriate for light industrial. I think as I read through this application, the applicant is requesting L I, which is light industrial, as well as variances, which is a fifty-foot landscape buff, buffer. He's asking for a variance on the side setbacks of, from twenty feet to ten and a half on two sides, and he's asking to waive the minimum parking requirement. I don't believe that's appropriate. I think this facility currently stores campers and boats, and, and we all know with campers comes onsite sewage management, and when you store campers that have, that can contain sewage without requiring these individuals to, to verify the location of where they're dumping this, it seems to me that the discharge and the runoff could be exponential at some point. Also, the site, it doesn't provide a dump station for these clients, and as I went back and looked at what Moose permitted when he built his facility, the permitting for his onsite septic management stated that the site was unsuitable, even if it only has one restroom in it right now, it's unsuitable soil because the percolation rate was a hun, was greater than one-twenty, one-twenty minutes per inch, as well as it had several ounces, it's several feet of dirt in the test pits. I think in the original soil report, which I requested from Environmental Health, the soil report by Coussa Soil stated that, quote, "Due to the lack of natural soil conditions, cut and fill," it stated, "unsuitable for existing conditions." As I asked for that from the Environmental Health, they gave me a permit that it looked like the owner had gone in around twenty-fifteen to ask for repair. That repair was never done for what's existing as far as his onsite septic goes, and it says that the act, that the status of that permit, or his application, is still active, and then it also notes on that application that the site approved as specified above says no. So he's gone in, in twenty-fifteen, so he's not even maintaining, it doesn't appear that he's maintained, let me put it that way, even his, the sewage for his own single facility inside that particular unit. So, when you review down through what stormwater comments are, they, they go down to where Lake Altoona, I'm sorry, Altoona Creek is one of the tributaries, and then it also states that he, you know, the buffer zones need to be maintained along the, you know, where Moose's place has actually a drainage feature. I think what Parks was saying, when he said that he didn't really feel like it was, it was just a buffer zone around Lake Altoona, I have a picture right here of the FEMA flood map, which shows when Lake Altoona is at flood stage, it would come all the way up to, excuse me, both sides of his property, and there's an actual blue line, which I know is not verified by a surveyor or a geologist, but this blue line through his property. And then yesterday, when I called Moose just to talk to him about my opposition to this, he mentioned to me that that drainage feature would require, what he thought, two forty-eight-inch pipes, which is quite a substantial, large amount of water thrown through that particular site, straight into Lake Altoona. So, as I went back and looked at what stormwater had said in regard to the impaired stream in Georgia, E P D noted Altoona Creek and Little Altoona Creek as impaired. Not only are they impaired, it also noted that they are in violation, and then it cited two violations that are existing. One is bio F, which is a, which is a biota impacted fish community, and then the other one's F C, which is fecal coliform bacteria. And then when it's moved from the violations at the E P D webpage, it moved on to the causes, and it cited six causes, and two of the causes were industrial. The first one being sewage, the second industrial, the, the third one residual from industrial, and then it's moved on down, it ended up down at urban runoff, which is really higher density. So, if you go, let's see, if you go back to stormwater's comments, stormwater said there's possibly wetlands, but they didn't verify it because it hasn't been verified, but from one of the mappings right here, you can tell that there is obviously a feature. And then they also noted that the intake, that this particular property is located in the intake zone for Cobb County's water intake for drinking water. They noted that it's within a seven-mile zone, but if you actually pull it up and measure it, it measured just under two miles, which is, is at one point, just right under two miles to that intake on the other side. So, I think also in the site conditions, under stormwater, they also noted that there would be, you know, grating of walls in the back, and they also noted that the current conditions, as it is now, would considerably favor water quality benefits as it exists in its current condition. Subject tract is neighborhood activity, the subject tract's also rural residential. I think even with, in the E P D's list of appropriate uses for water quality, rural residential is one of those particular quality. Also, one other note that stormwater, I'm sorry, water and sewer made, was they, they said that they would, septic tank is recommended, obviously it's subject to the Health Department, and they said continued use of septic is subject to Health Department approval and review. Just like I said, I, it doesn't appear that what's out there existing in its current condition even complies with what really should be done for the unit that's there, and so, it, it's my recommendation that you deny the zoning request because it's unsuitable for L I, and it's, and waiving the buffer landscapes, the stream buffer, the side setbacks, would just create additional harm to the already impaired watershed of Lake Altoona or drinking water.
Thank you for your comments, sir. All right, that concludes the opposition. This is in District One. Commissioner Belonging will lead our discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, let me get Parks back up to start with. Certainly respect you and Mr. Sam's as experts on the issue of incremental maneuver. Welcome your comments.
Yeah, and listen to him, it kind of, it begs the question, if sewer's the issue, why would inactive storage not be the best use for this property?
So, can you just comment on, how many additional campers are you proposing to park here as a result of adding this?
This is a...
All internal storage?
All internal storage, yes.
So, so...
And the, and the campers should not be discharging, and that's, that's, that's a separate issue, and if you're talking water quality, and I had him zoom out, the biggest impact to water quality around here is, you see all that grass that's around the church that's just to our south? That's spread, it was fertilizing herbicides, spread all over it, then it flows straight into the, the lake. I mean, we're talking water quality, actually, dead storage, we don't have bathroom needs because it's storage. It is, once it's developed, it's stabilized, we'll have water quality features that, you know, at the discharge points of the, of what's paved, and you don't have large areas of landscaping that is spread with herbicides and pesticides. This is actually a very innocuous use from a water quality standpoint. Mentioned industrial, you know, this is storage, we're not talking industrial, any manufacturing, any storage of chemicals or anything like that. It is dro, dead storage, inactive use, and it can't think of a better...
You're, you're willing to agree to some stipulation that no campers will be stored on this piece of land?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. All right. Would you be willing to meet with the Willmans?
Yes, be glad to. We're both, we're North Cobb grads.
Oh, you know, you went to high school together?
We represent.
Okay.
The Warriors.
I see. Fantastic. All right, well, look...
They're good folks. Glad to meet with them.
I'll let my fellow planning commissioners ask any questions they, they might have of you, you've answered mine.
Any, any questions of the applicant while he is here?
And, and just for the record, too, he kept referencing Moose.
Yes.
And for those who don't know, the owner of Parkatoy is Moose McCray, McCray, and so, that's, if you wondered why he was referencing Moose, and that, that's who he was referencing.
Any relation to the road?
No.
Different McCoy?
McCray.
Okay.
Sorry, I mispronounced it.
No Hatfields?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So, if you could just nod, the Willmans, will you be willing to meet with Mr. Huff over the next few weeks, and we won't be able to visit this in January, it'll be February we visit this again, just to make sure everybody's concerns are addressed? Okay, thank you. Okay, in that case, unless any of my fellow commissioners wish to ask any other questions of anyone, my motion would be that we hold this till the, or continue, which is the right word?
Hold.
Thank you. That we hold this until the February calendar.
All right, we have a motion to hold?
Yes, for Z sixty-six.
Okay, fine. That is the motion as to Z sixty-six.
Second. All right. Any, so any discussion? Call a question? All right, motion's approved four zero, and then SLUP eight?
Thank you. My motion as to SLUP eight is likewise that we hold this until the February twenty-twenty-four calendar.
All right.
Second?
Motion and a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any discussion? Call a question? Motion is approved four zero, no opposition.
Okay, moving into land use permits on today's agenda. First case we're going to hear is L U P twenty-nine, James A. Frank, request a temporary land use permit for firearm manufacturing in Land Lot Two-Ninety-One of the Eighteenth District. The property is located on the east side of Queen Mill Road, north of Maybton Parkway. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to L U P twenty-nine?
Two.
Two? Let the record show there's two people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is James Frank, and I'm the property owner of six-five-eight-five Queen Mill Road in Maybton, Georgia, home of F B R Customs. I currently hold a federal firearms license class one, which authorizes me to purchase and sell firearms within the A T F guidelines. What I'm not allowed to do is assemble a firearm from parts and sell it, or in any way alter the weapon from an original manufacturer configuration. That's considered manufacturing, and that is why I've applied for an F F L class seven. After speaking with Inspector Martinez of the A T F, he said that I have to abide by all county regulations in order to be granted the F F L class seven, and that is why I've applied for the land use permit. I'm aware there are a lot of concerns about the term manufacturing of firearms, so I've brought a couple of examples of the manufacturing I'd like to do. Put this up there. Okay, what I'm showing here is a stripped polymer lower that can be used to assemble a Glock seventeen or Glock nineteen, which is, when finished, an F F L item. If I complete the lower trigger mechanism, or complete the firearm a hundred percent with an upper assembly, that is considered manufacturing, and it must be done under a class seven. What I'm showing here, this is a high-end aftermarket trigger mechanism. If I remove the original trigger mechanism from any firearm and replace it with the aftermarket trigger mechanism, it is considered manufacturing, and it must be done under a class seven. In order to complete the class seven application, I need the permit, I need land use permit for this. There have always been, there has never been any sales at my residence, nor will there ever be. There will also be no foot traffic. Concerns were raised about the test firing of weapons. If needed, this will be done only at a firing range. As a former, former Navy gunner's mate and special operations, I'm trained in all aspects of firearm safety and handling. I was a certified range master and firearms instructor, so needless to say, safety is my primary concern. Concerns over safety are noted. My property is covered one hundred percent with motion sensors, as well as cameras and alarm systems. My firearms are and will continue to be kept in a gun safe, locked in a building that has already been inspected and approved by the A T F. My property is gated, completely fenced, and no access is possible without my approval. Signs are posted throughout the property, warning that trespassing is a bad idea. I know you guys have a lot of questions, happy to answer any questions. Again, thank you, and I appreciate your consideration and approval in this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. We'll hear from the opposition first, and then we'll bring you back up with questions.
My name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Maybton Improvement Coalition. We would ask that you deny this land use permit for firearms manufacturing. We understand the necessity of it for the A T F licensing. However, we believe that this is simply not an appropriate business for a residential area, especially a residential, especially in this particular location adjacent to so many single-family homes. Safety is our primary concern. The more this business grows... The more this business grows in this location, the more it will be visible in business listings online and in similar locations. And in all candor, we do, despite Mr. Frank's safety plans and precautions, believe that it does become an attractive target for folks wishing to break the law. So with that, we would ask that you deny this land use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other opposition. This is in District Four, and I will lead the discussion with respect to this land use permit request. If I could have Mr. Frank come back up, please. Thank you. I know you mentioned you have a current license. Can you just expound on that, just a little bit more what that license allows you to do?
My current license is an FFL Class 1, which I'm currently utilizing by selling, purchasing and selling firearms on GunBroker.com, and eventually I'll be doing the same thing at gun shows as well. Sorry.
So do you have guns that are delivered to you via FedEx or UPS?
Yes, that's correct. So in order to get a gun transferred into my possession, I have to, one, either have my own federal firearms license, which I do, or I have to, two, have it transferred to a local establishment that has a federal firearms license, go in, fill out the application paperwork, and then pick up the weapon and take it to my home. But that's only for personal use. So what I've been doing recently is purchasing weapons, I mean, maybe one to two a month if we're talking numbers, holding them, figuring out demand, turning around and selling them. The only thing that I can replace on a weapon without it being considered manufacturing is an optic. So recently, you know, I picked up a couple of Glocks 1917, replaced an optic, put an optic on it, bring the price up a few hundred dollars and turn around and sell it on GunBroker. And with the FFL Class 1, I don't have to go through paying the transfer, the FFL transfers, all I do is record it in my logbooks and then take it down to UPS and drop it off.
Okay. And so the license you're applying now will allow you to make, as the example you showed, swap up triggers, it sounds like?
Correct, correct. If I change anything, it was, I was a little taken back by the ATF's regulations, but if I change anything internally in the weapon, the trigger mechanism that I showed is probably one of the highest-end trigger mechanisms you can find because it's fully adjustable for competition shooting. If I replace that, it is considered manufacturing, and that's why, I mean, I would like to do that. You know, as far as she was speaking to, you know, the volume of, people are going to know it, nowhere is it available on a website anywhere that I'm actually manufacturing or selling guns at my residence. I have it listed under FBR Customs, and there will be no signage. Honestly, the only way anybody knows about this right now is us forced to put up the land use permit signs which says manufacturing, weapons manufacturing.
Just trying to think, I had one more question. It'll come to me. Let me see if my fellow commissioners have any questions of you while you're here.
I just had one, just one really, really basic question. So assuming you do get the zoning, then is the next step an approval at the county level or is it at the ATF level?
The next, the next step is approval at the ATF level. So I already, I already met with the inspector from the ATF, and he said, I would give you the license today, but I have to be in compliance with Cobb County. And Cobb County specifically says any manufacturing in a residential area has to go through a land use permit.
Okay, got it, great.
Eventually, if it, if the business gets big enough, I will move it to a commercially zoned area. But right now, we're talking one to two guns per month.
And just for sound attenuation, for, is that something where you're already set up for, I mean, for any kind of a noise mitigation around? You don't anticipate fire, I mean
Test firing.
Test firing?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, any, any test firing that we've done will be at the local gun range.
Okay, got it. Sorry, sorry if you mentioned that earlier, I just wanted
No worries.
Just trying to digest all the information. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The other question I had just relates to security, and I know you've talked about motion detectors. Could we spend a little time just kind of going through each of the security features that you have on your property to discourage, I guess?
So I've got the entire property fenced in. It's got, I've got a six-foot privacy fence around the entire backside of the property. The front side of the property is fenced in with gates. I've got cameras at all the gates, cameras facing the front of my house, from the back of the house, and facing the external building where all this is going to take place. If you guys saw the land survey, there's a separate building that sets off the back of my property. That's been converted into like an area where I can do this stuff at. I've got security systems there, and then across the back of the property and across the front, I've got motion detectors as well. So they're set at head level, so if somebody walks through, it'll go off and it alerts me in the house, or it rings to my phone and lets me know that there's somebody actually trying to walk through the back of my property or the front.
If we could pull up the aerial for the property real quick? Just want to So the building you were talking about is just left of the 2020, or right of the 2023? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, it's the one right to the back there. That's the main house, it's the one right there.
Right there, okay. Any, any other questions? There, I'll just bring to your attention, staff has recommended denial, and you probably know that already.
I'm sorry, say it.
Staff has recommended denial? I don't know if you knew that.
I didn't know that.
Okay. In addition to some of the comments that have been shared with the Maybton, from the Maybton Improvement Coalition, there are at least a couple of comments I received, people expressing their concern about the presence of this activity in such a residential area. And, you know, the concern being that unintended consequences by granting this, does it bring notoriety to the area, notoriety to the area that may not be unwanted, at least because of the activity, knowing that firearms are there? So I just wanted you to be aware of that, these other comments that came in.
I will add that the ATF inspector was very impressed with my security systems.
It's unfortunate, you know, they call this manufacturing because it's, that's an interesting way to describe it because it doesn't sound like manufacturing. When I think of manufacturing, it's more assembly.
Correct.
Is there, is there ammunition on site as well?
My personal ammunition, there won't be anything else.
Your personal ammunition, yeah. All right. Any other questions you guys have of him at this point?
I just have one little question. When you receive equipment, parts, whatever it is, how do they come to you?
Through the mail.
Through the mail, through the regular mail? I mean
Through the regular mail. I have the, I've given the delivery people, the UPS, FedEx, and the USPS access to my gate codes, so they come in and they've got a drop box, they put everything in inside that.
Secure on your property?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you, sir. Don't have any additional questions at this time. I took a look at code section 134-36, which is a temporary land use permits, and, yeah, starting in section E, just a description of what factors need to be considered by the Board of Commissioners with respect to granting these types of requests, or actually, I should say, section G. The first one that jumps out is just safety, health, and welfare and moral concerns involving the surrounding neighborhood. And so when I, I think about this and this request, and I'm sure Mr. Frank is doing everything he can to ensure safety of his property, given the activity that's occurring, I do worry about the unintended consequences of inducing this type of use in a residential area. I wonder if it's more suited for a commercial use? And if it also has the unintended consequence of making the property more attractive for burglaries of sorts. I think, and I understand he's got his security features in place, but all it takes is one, and that, that is a concern to me. So I think based on those factors, my motion would be to support staff's recommendation to deny the request, and that would be my motion. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just, just more of a question for the commission, for the commission. Since this is a land use permit, in order to get a license, I guess actually this might be a question of planning. In order to secure this license, is there a minimum length that the LUP has to be?
That I'm not sure about, but I'm sure whatever length the federal firearm license is for is what the board has to approve it for. You know, it could just be approved for a week so he can get his license and then expire. It has to run with the length of the federal permit.
It has to run with the length of the federal permit.
So what are you thinking? I'm just
Just wondering if license can be obtained, but for use at a different location.
I'm sure if he, if he rented space in a gun shop, you know, this, this wouldn't be the same issue we're having today.
Okay. Yeah, just thinking through this scenario, so
I got you, I got you.
Okay.
But at that point, would we need to be, that'd be a different application?
Yeah, it would not be in this process.
Right, it wouldn't be in this process, got you.
Okay, so there's an avenue for
Right.
Something that avoids having to go through this process, but still allowing for the license to be obtained. Okay, that was the only thing I wanted to discuss and confirm, that we weren't kind of just leaving that option hanging out there without
Right, good point.
Reasonable off ramp.
Good point.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call a question? All those in favor, show my sign of I. It is 3-1 with Commissioner Dance opposed.
Our next case is LUP 30, Donald Perry, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than Dakota allows in landlot 559 of the 18th District. Property is located on the southeast side of Farmington Drive at the terminus of Angus Trail. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 30?
No.
Let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good afternoon.
My name is Donald Perry. I stay at 2639 Farmington Drive. We would like to have an allowance for more vehicles parking on, at the home. In October, end of October last year, the code enforcement called me and was informing me that the tenants was parking on the grass and, and all over the streets and stuff like that. I currently was in California. I moved here in January of this year, and I asked them if they could wait till I got here to, so I could try to take care of the situation, which they did. Since then, the cars aren't parking on the grass, and then they told us about too many cars at the property. Well, I wasn't aware of that at the time, so now that we took care of the first issue that they told us. We currently have seven adults at the home, and four of the adults are in school, going to school for nursing, and have gotten their CNA, three of them have gotten their CNA while they're going to school, excuse me. Since we got the notice and a few citations, we asked our neighbors if they would help with the parking issue. Two of them have agreed to allow at least one car to park on their property, reducing the cars on our property to seven. We also talked with the zoning committee, and they informed us that we were trying to figure out a way to resolve the issue, and we came up with a two-car port by the end of this year. We've already purchased the carport and have made preparations for the carport to be installed. Our family in these hard times, they're young people, so they're making their, they're making their mark, and they pretty much just need somewhere to live while they're getting themselves started and stuff like that. And for this reason, we're asking the board to grant us additional parking for, I'm gonna say about six months to their finished school and can move on and buy their own homes at some point in this here time. We pretty much didn't understand what the code was, and each time we do something, it's like the bar gets moved back a little bit further. We're learning as we go, so, like, we could have did this here earlier this year, maybe, but they recently just told us about getting a variance to come and ask for additional parking and stuff. So that's why we're here today, to ask for additional parking for temporary. And pretty much that's it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perry. We don't have any opposition, but I'm going to ask if you, I'm going to excuse you now for a moment, if you could take a seat.
I'm sorry, sorry, we're here in
I'm sorry. We're, if you don't have any additional comments to make, I'm going to excuse you now from the podium, you can take a seat. I'm sure we'll call you back up if we have any questions, okay? Since there is no opposition present, I did receive a couple of emails of concern expressed by some nearby neighbors, but with that, and this is in District Four, excuse me, and that's why I'll lead the discussion here, I want to have Code Enforcement come up, and she can share with us some of the Code Enforcement history as it relates to this particular piece of property.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolisa Fauston from Cobb County Code Enforcement. We received a complaint in October of 2022, and it stated that there are five, five-plus cars continuously parked on the grass driveway and on the street outside the home. Some cars have California plates, and some cars do not have license plates at all. One car also parks, sits outside my home with the driver still in the car on a frequent basis. One car also parks, sits outside my home with the driver still in the car on a frequent basis. Officer came out on October twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two and issued a notice of violation for single-family dwelling, parking standards and non-compliance vehicles. During the timeframe of the case being active, we did place the case on a list for early morning inspections. Officer monitored the property from April twenty-fifth all the way to May sixth. And during that timeframe, six to eight vehicles was observed at the house. And the max vehicles they could have outside of the garage of the carport is four. Most of the days, there were about eight vehicles, seven to eight vehicles. Citation was issued in May of twenty twenty-three. The case went to court and the defendant pled guilty and paid the fine. That was in June of twenty twenty-three. Another round of early morning inspections were conducted in August, from August twenty-ninth up until September ninth of twenty twenty-three. And again, the property was found in violation of having too many vehicles. Most days, they had about seven vehicles. Another citation was issued for single-family dwelling. During that timeframe, before court, a citizen came into the office and advised me that there is about fourteen cars observed at the property. And also, the property owner did come into the office and apply for a lump and the case did go to court. The beginning of November, the defendant paid the fine and pled guilty. And I did check before I came up here, he does currently have an active, well, he did apply for a building permit on November twenty-first of twenty twenty-two. I do see that it hasn't fully been issued yet, so that's something that's on the building end, but he did apply.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Code Enforcement? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, if I could have you come back up. Quick question, you mentioned that this is your place of residence?
Yes.
You gave this is your address.
Yes.
Okay. In doing some of your remarks, though, you mentioned you weren't aware of some of the park, the cars parking on the property. So I was just trying to reconcile that in my
Exactly. As she mentioned, in October, I was in California.
Right.
So the car, we had our car shipped here and stuff like that. And I also still have a business in California as well. No, I wasn't aware of everything that was going on at the time. So when I, when me and my wife actually recognized what was going on, we tried to adjust ourselves. Initially, we understand about the four cars being parked outside the property, but then, I don't know, I don't understand. They told us it would be seven cars. Now, I don't know where that came from, but I do know because our basement was finished. So they included the square footage on our basement, which doubled our single-family home, and I think that increased it to seven cars. But we're trying to comply. We're trying, you know, we're trying to build this carport so we can put two cars under there and then have the four cars possibly parked outside of the property or something like that. And as Code Enforcement said, when they did come, they did see the vehicles parked accordingly as they noted and stuff.
So it looks like just from the tax accessory information, at least one of the photographs I've seen there, is there a one-car garage?
There is a one-car garage that we've converted into
Living space?
Man cave and stuff like that.
Okay.
You know, so.
And then your remarks here, just a few moments ago, you mentioned
I'm sorry.
Yes, in your remarks, just a few moments ago, you mentioned six months. All you need is six months.
Well, I'm hoping, you know, these are my grandkids and stuff, you know, and our great-grandkids there. We're just, like I said, we're trying to comply.
So to continue on my thought there, six months, but then you want a building permit for a carport. So I guess I'm trying to, again, reconcile in my mind, is this a situation that will end in six months? Or, or, or you, or you, is the intent to continue parking there or having seven cars, eight cars? And now you just have them in a, have at least some of them in a carport? So I'm just trying to reconcile that.
That is correct. We ordered the carport and so it'll be here. And I was, my understanding was, we don't need a building permit if it was within a four hundred square foot, whatever, twenty by twenty, and that is the size of the carport that we're getting put in, installing. So my understanding is that we didn't need a building permit for that. We went, we actually went to the building permit and that's what we were instructed. Also, I think Code Enforcement also instructed us that as well.
Okay, so I don't know if you can show us, I'd like to know where the carport will go on the property. I'm just trying to
Oh, do with the property, yeah. It's gonna go right in front of the garage area. I really can't see with that one.
I can see it, I can kind of see.
Yes, yes, right there. Where, that's not our, oh, that's not ours. Anyway, right where the one car on the end is.
Yes, sir.
That, the last car, the first one. Okay, that's where the carport is gonna go, right in that area.
So is the plan also to expand the driveway there?
Yes.
So that you can get to, because right now you couldn't get two cars there because you, you only have, you only have room for one vehicle.
Right, so what I've done is right here, from the end of the drive, right here, we, see where the little U is right there?
Yes, sir.
I've actually put a concrete, I guess, little slab or something right there so that it will be able to put the two cars right in that carport area.
Okay, because what, and this may be an old photograph, it looks like there's grass there now, and I guess the grass is no longer there? And it's been paved over, is that what you're saying?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So I guess I'll go back to my original question, just from a moment ago. You only needed six months, but now you're doing, you want to put up a carport.
Yes.
So that sounds like this will continue. That gives me, that gives me the impression this will continue. So, so help me understand.
Okay.
Do you want the six months or are you trying to have this continue?
Well, I kind of, I don't, I don't, once again, they're my grandchildren. And they don't have a timeline for when they have to vacate the property or anything like that, but they're working. And they're doing the best they can. And I'm saying six months, you know. And, you know, they've tried to move out on their own initially, you know, but like I heard someone mention earlier, you have to have three times the income to move into whatever and stuff like that. And they're really not in that type of position to do it at this time and stuff. But now they're gainfully employed and moving on with their career and stuff. Actually, one of my granddaughters actually got her LPN a few months ago and stuff, so that's a big plus for us and stuff. And she recently got married, so her and her family, you know, should be moving out sometime this year because we're helping them save their money and so that they can move forward.
Right, okay. One of the concerns that I'm aware of that was expressed via the email that I received from some of the neighbors was the width of Farmington Drive is a pretty narrow street. So when you're, so when you're parked on the, Farmington Drive is a narrow street. So when you're parked, when vehicles are parked in the right of way there, it makes it difficult for people to get around. So I've observed, I mean, I think Code Enforcement said there've been five, six cars parked on the right of way in front of your home. And so it makes it difficult for people to maneuver around. The other concern has been issued, you know, or expresses children that may be playing in the area. They run out into the street and concerns about that. So I just wanted you to be aware of some of the concerns that have been expressed by the, your neighbors in the area about the parking activity at the property. Do you have any, have a response to that?
Yes, our community here, it's not a heavy traffic community. Not that what you said is not a concern because we actually posted children at play signs on both ends of the property and stuff so that allowed others to slow down with children at play and stuff like that.
All right, I'm gonna stop there and see if my fellow commissioners have any questions of the applicants.
Mr. Perry, I'm sorry if I misheard, at the very beginning of your comments, did you, did you say something about a tenant?
I'm sorry?
A tenant?
Yes.
Did I hear, I didn't know if I heard that correctly, but
I heard that too.
Yeah, did you say something about a tenant at the
Tenants?
A tenant, yeah, somebody's a tenant in a rental property.
No, they're my grandkids. If I said tenants, I'm just saying, they're our family and we're trying to help them save some money so that they can move forward in life.
And you and your wife reside there at this property? Go ahead.
So it's you and your wife, and then you have four individuals who are nursing students?
I have four granddaughters, yes.
Okay, and so
And one of them's married, just recently got married, so that makes seven of us.
Okay, so it's you and your wife, four granddaughters, and the husband of one of your granddaughters.
Yes.
And you indicated in your earlier remarks that some, you expect some of them to graduate?
Well, yes.
You've got one that graduated.
And she's gonna graduate again the end of this year, getting her RN. She has her LPN as currently.
And the other three, how far are they?
They have their CNAs. I believe they took a state test and they're doing CNA work.
So they're all employed?
Yes.
So all four, all five other individuals that, other than you and your wife are employed?
Yes.
Okay, and do they work outside the home?
Yes.
Okay, and do you and your wife work outside the home?
We're retired.
Okay. So you have five individuals who work outside the home and you and your wife, and you have how many vehicles?
We have eight vehicles. Yes, we have eight vehicles. I have two, my wife has one. My granddaughter and her husband have a vehicle each. And my other three granddaughters, they have vehicles as well.
Okay, do they work, do they work at the same places or do they work at different places?
No, they work different, I'm glad you asked that question. They work differently. Some work overnight, actually several, three of them work overnight at times and stuff. So in the morning, when they're doing their inspection and stuff, you know, they're probably just getting home and whatever. And I'm not making excuses for the parking at all because it's happening and stuff. And we're trying to, that's why we're trying to do what we can do to try to correct the situation.
Yeah, we're trying to help you get there too. So what kind of cars are they? I mean, are they compact cars?
We have
Yeah, tell me what you got.
Well, we have, I know we have at least three compact cars. My wife's car is, I guess, is considered a sedan. And then we have three mini SUVs, you know. And they're nice cars too.
You like your cars.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
And Mr. Perry, I think you had said at the beginning as well that you had made some arrangements with your neighbors?
Yes.
So yeah, eight, just to make sure I'm understanding the math correctly, there are eight total cars, two of which are parked on neighbors' lots?
They will be. We made arrangements for the neighbors to say that, asked them if we could use their property to use. This, like, if you look at the map there, the one neighbor on each side, actually.
Yep. They have some space, I guess.
Yeah, up by the corner there, we have one that's gonna park there. And behind the telephone pole there, one's gonna park there.
Got it. And, and who, seven folks, eight cars, who has the two cars?
He does.
You have the two cars, okay, I'm sorry. A lot of numbers going around here.
Yes.
Okay, so just theoretically, if you're able to find an alternative location for that and have the two, for that one car and then have the two other cars which are, would be parked on neighbors, that gets you down to five. And the, so we're down, we need one more, right?
Right, we need one more. Although the carport count, is that inside or outside?
The cat is inside.
Okay, so I think you're gonna have two cars under the carport, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Well, we probably need to look at some sort of schematic just to see what, what that would look like, a site plan, something scratched out so we can kind of see what that looks like. And I guess what I also want to know, you, you've talked to the property owners, I guess, about parking vehicles there. I think we need to know that they're committed to that or authorizing that in some way.
Could you repeat yourself, I'm sorry?
I said a couple of things. A schematic, a site plan showing where the carport is going to go, how many vehicles will be parked there? And what it will look like. The other, the other thing that I need to understand too is you mentioned property owners have given you permission to park one car each on their property. I think we need to see what sort of arrangement, authorization they've given you to do that.
Okay, let's see if I can gather
If we could get that information. And I think we're gonna need that before we can finalize a decision, before, before we can make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. Okay? Go ahead. Oh, Code Enfor, I'm sorry.
I just wanted it to be on record, where he's trying to put the carport at is a violation. It would be a violation of an accessory structure. He cannot have a carport on the side of the property. If he goes through the variance process and get permission from the board, then it would be allowed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Were you aware of that, Mr. Perry?
No, because Code actually told us that we could put the carport there. And that's why we moved forward to do this here. I wouldn't have spent the money to do it if they didn't.
Yeah, it sounds like you need to have another conversation with
Yes.
Staff and figure out exactly what can be done.
That sounds good.
So here's, here's what I want to recommend or suggest. Well, I'm gonna let you sit down unless my other commissioners have any questions. I think in the interim, I'd like to hold this case, but at the same time, put the applicant on notice. There should be no additional parking of vehicles in the right of way at all during this sixty-day holding period because we will not be back until February sixth. And that would be my motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any question, discussion?
Just a question, can we make sure he understands what your motion is?
We can. Mr. Perry, you understand my motion? I, I can do that, sir. We're gonna hold your request until February sixth. That'll be the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission. During that time, sir, no parking of vehicles in the public right of way at all. Correct. Correct. Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
This dialogue has passed its opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let him know. Okay. Oh. We lost a commissioner. Thank you. Go ahead.
So could you amend that motion to add not only that limitation but direction that it be held until that time and that he is required at that next meeting to return with items you asked him for?
Yes. I'll be happy to amend it.
And can you articulate what those are so he knows what to bring back?
Sure. Amending the motion to include that you come back with a site plan that reflects where you intend to place the carport on the property. Place the carport on the property, no additional, no parking on the public right of way. And I'm trying to remember the third item we discussed, I think that was it. Any additional?
Record of the arrangement with the neighbors.
That's right, thank you. Record of the arrangement with your neighbors that are authorizing you to purchase property or purchase to park vehicles on their property. Okay, all right. Motion and a second. Any additional comment? We'll call a question. Motion passes four zero. John, we'll call the next case.
LDP 32, Julia Welton, request a temporary land use permit to allow dog boarding and daycare in Land Lot 148 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Hill Road and on the northwest side of Mars Hill Road. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
The director said the applicant's here. Is there anyone here opposed to LDP 32?
No.
The director says no one opposed.
Hello, my name is Julia Welton and I'm the property owner of 4990 Hill Road in Acworth, Georgia. We are here today for a temporary land use permit for a small-scale dog boarding and daycare business to be operated from the finished basement of the home. The basement is approximately 900 square feet. The home sits on four acres and there's a small farm on the property. There is a separate entrance to the business through the fenced-in backyard into the basement. The business plans to accommodate up to 10 dogs per night for boarding and up to five additional dogs Monday through Friday for daycare. The mission of the business is to provide dogs with a stress-free environment in a small-scale setting where they receive more one-on-one attention than in a traditional boarding or daycare facility. There are no cages or small crates and all dogs boarded with us will stay in a spacious custom-built suite. The residence is located in Acworth, Georgia at the corner of Mars Hill and Hill Road. There are approximately 54,000 people that reside in the 30101 zip code. Forty-four point five percent of all U.S. households own a dog. Therefore, there are approximately 24,000 dogs in the 30101 zip code. There are currently seven dog boarding facilities within a 10-mile radius of the residence according to a Google search. Cold calls were made to each facility. I was able to speak with someone at six of the seven boarding facilities and none of them provided any type of overnight care for the dogs. Dogs at these other facilities are left unattended overnight anywhere between eight and a half and 12 hours. Our business will operate seven days a week for boarding in between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday for daycare. Drop-off times will be 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. by appointment only and pickup times will be from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. by appointment only. This will reduce the number of cars in the driveway at any given time. The main driveway is on Hill Road and has been upgraded to a U shape to allow for one-way in and out of customers. The driveway can accommodate six to eight vehicles at one time for pet drop-off or pickup times. The flow of traffic will not be impeded onto Hill Road. Curbside pickup and drop-off services will also be provided. The business will be operated by myself and my sister Mallory Welton. Both myself and Mallory reside at the residence, but will be someone available at all times to supervise and care for the dogs. The safety of the dogs, pet owners, and employees of the business is top priority. Dogs will be leash at all times when being led to and from the business. There will be a double gate at the entrance to the business to prevent dogs from getting loose or escaping. Employees will be PetSaver CPR, first aid, and care certified. I have completed my fear-free boarding and daycare certification, which focuses on recognizing reducing fear, anxiety, and stress in dogs in order for them to have a positive daycare and/or boarding experience. Our dog-to handler ratio will be lower than the industry standard of one handler to every 10 to 15 dogs in order for any potential situations to be immediately mitigated. Only dogs who are well-socialized will be allowed to play in group. Group play will be determined by pet size and play styles and separate areas will be provided to accommodate each. Dogs who do not do well socially will not be allowed in our daycare program. Dogs who do not do well socially who are being boarded will have individual playtime in lieu of group play. Dogs will be continuously monitored for signs of fear, anxiety, and stress to minimize the potential for escalation to dog aggression or fights. Evaluations will first be conducted with dogs on a one-on-one basis and built up to group play. Being certified and able to recognize dog body language will mitigate the potential for dog fights. It is not common for dog fights to happen if the proper precautions are in place. In the event of emergency, the owner will be immediately contacted. If the situation requires immediate veterinary care and the owners cannot be reached, discretion will be left to myself and Mallory. The suites will be sanitized daily and fully stripped and cleaned after each dog's departure. Common areas will also be sanitized daily. Dog waste will be cleaned up several times a day and disposed of through American Disposal Waste Management, which is picked up from the residence on a weekly basis. An air purifier will also be used to remove pet dander, dust, mites, polyp, bacteria from the air. The property is also serviced by active pest control. In regard to noise, and due to our small-scale setting and fear-free training techniques, barking will be reduced as much as possible. We will not accept dogs that are excessive barkers. We will also use food enrichment activities such as treats, toys, puzzles, and lick mats, which will be offered to all dogs. Enrichment reduces stress and boredom and can help with behavioral issues such as obstruction, barking, escaping, anxiety, hyperactivity, obsessive-compulsive behaviors, and depression. Dogs will also receive social enrichment, physical enrichment, and sensory enrichment. All dogs are required to be update, date on their distemper rabies and bordetellus vaccines. Vet records must be provided within 72 hours of the pet's initial stay and will not be allowed to expire during their stay. Dogs must also be current on flea and tick preventative. We thank you for your time and consideration today and we hope that our outline presented to the board will result in an approval decision.
All right, seeing there is no opposition, this is in District 1. Commissioner Blowing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Peterson, would you give us the county's recommendation and reasons?
Yes, Commissioner Blowing, the county's staff's position or recommendation is to deny the request. And we just feel like it's, it's too busy for residential, for residential area. I mean, they're gonna have 70 clients coming per week. And, you know, the county staff is well aware of problems with dog daycare, barking in commercial and industrial areas. We get complaints about that. So we just don't feel it's appropriate in residential area.
Can the applicant come back up? First of all, do you, do you have a kennel license yet?
Uh, no, we have to have zoning approval prior to getting a kennel license.
Okay. I'm not gonna, not gonna require you to do this on the spot, but basically, to me, the burden's on you giving staff recommendation to find a way to assure us that there's not gonna be a noise issue with your neighbors, and at least one of whom has a house very nearby, right? I mean, it looks like just a couple hundred feet away, maybe?
We do, our closest neighbor, I have talked to both the husband and wife who own the home, and that we've explained our business plan to them, that it's going to be small-scale, that there will always be somebody there to address barking immediately. I mean, we clearly can't control every single time a dog barks, but there will always be somebody there to supervise and mitigate those situations. And they were fine, once I explained to them what we were going to do, they were fine with our business plan.
Okay. Can you point me to another similar situation, anywhere in the county or nearby, that I could go visit or drive by? That, that people that use the same methods as you and maybe employ some of the same noise mitigation methods to, or I could go see it, go do a visit?
An in-home type visit? I don't know of, personally of anybody else who does in-home boarding, but there are several brick-and-mortar facilities around the area. They don't offer the supervision that we will overnight to mitigate barking.
So if I hold this request, can I, can I ask you to follow up with me within two weeks and get me what, what you think would be some good examples for me to visit that would give me some assurance level or some comfort level that this would not create a noise problem for the, for the neighbors? Is that something you could look into?
Yeah, I can look into it, sure.
Okay, thank you. You can have a seat, unless anybody else has a question.
Can I, can I just ask you a question? I mean, very detailed business plan. Do y'all have some credentials too that relate to all this and could you share them with us?
Yeah, so I just received my fear-free certification, which is you basically are trained to recognize fear, anxiety, and stress in animals through their body language because they, like humans, can't tell you what's wrong. So you basically are just looking for cues to help you understand what's going on from the dog's perspective and then apply different situations to help mitigate that fear. I also, I mentioned that I have a farm. I have my stable license. I have horses, goats, chickens, ducks, and geese. So I mean, I grew up horseback riding, I've been around animals my whole life, you know, we're the kind of people who, when we have pets, we have them for their lifetime. I had a dog who went blind at the age of three, who lived till she was almost 13. I cared for her that whole time. So we've always had a very, like, unwavering love for animals. You know, dogs especially since most people have dogs and they're a very common animal. But, you know, so on top of certifications, we have the life experience as well.
I really think a lot of the dog barking that people experience, the issues, is most likely gonna be staff issues or just having too many dogs or the wrong dogs in a group atmosphere. I really think that if the dogs are, you know, socialized, a lot of our customers, we think will be like siblings, they'll come with multiple animals. A lot of people we know own multiple animals, we own multiple animals. So, like, we would expect that, but, so I just totally lost my train of thought right there at the end.
The what?
We were talking about the barking. Yeah, so the barking. I really think it is the boredom on the dog's part, and if a dog is just left to bark, somebody's not doing their job. Somebody, whether it's your pet or you're at a boarding situation, you don't just leave a dog barking. That's just crazy to me to even imagine that people do that. So I really think the barking, I do know that you guys are saying that there is, you know, other businesses, and this is a topic that comes up a lot, is the barking. And so I, I don't know one off my head of somewhere very similar where you could go to get an exact experience of what we're trying to do because what we really want to do is a small, hands-on, really good, just activities and fun for people's pets while they're on vacation.
Got it. You say you have a farm somewhere?
It's also located on my property. I have four acres.
Okay. Thank you both. If you could just give me that, give me, give me some examples of some places to visit to get a handle on, on noise issues. Other people maybe who have the same training and you think are doing it right? I'd appreciate it.
Okay, and do they need to be, I just, I don't know anybody who's doing, I guess, I don't know how to find them, I guess, is what I'm saying, because I don't, most people who are doing boarding out of their home, I don't know if they've gone through the zoning process and, you know, they don't appear on a Google search because I have looked for, you know, boarding near me and what pops up are your brick-and-mortar places. So I'm not quite sure how I will locate places, but I mean, I will definitely...
Yeah, doesn't have to be out of the home, maybe uses the same certification techniques that you discussed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Add one more question of...
One more question? Sorry, one more question.
It's a, it's a quick one. Yeah, just, would it be, sorry, would it be possible for you to get the, just anything from the neighbors in writing?
I can, yes. I also, I just didn't have time to go pick it up today due to traffic and things on our way here, but my equine vet has written a letter of recommendation and I can also provide that as well. They come to my farm and although they don't take care of my dog and my cat, they take care of my, my horses, so they're at least twice a year at a minimum on my farm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my, my motion would be that we hold this till February.
Second. All right, motion, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a question? Motion passes four zero. I think that concludes our cases for the day.
As for the zoning cases, we do have one other business item to adopt your dates and times for your hearings for 2024.
Entertain a motion, approve our dates, times, and places. It's the yellow sheet. I'll, so moved. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a question? Motion passes four zero. And then I think, next two items are disapproving our minutes for the zoning hearing November 7th, 2023. And a motion.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion, second.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Anderson. Call a question? Motion approved, four zero. Next item, minutes of our special call meeting on November 27th.
Move to approve.
Motion. We have a second for Commissioner Blowing. Any discussion? Call a question? Motion approved, four zero. That concludes our meeting for December 5th. Thank you all.